Okay.
Michelle, I'm showing as absent on this minute meeting, meeting minutes from June Camp that I was actually.
So Dr. Meyer, I'm assuming you could follow up with that or okay, this, do you want me to state what her statements were?
No, is it the dashy you're saying?
Dashy, yes.
I would like to just remind.
Correct. No, thank you, Brooke. I appreciate the reminder. And then the other one was. Retirement letter. From employee zero six point two four point two zero two one G. I would like to have a better understanding of the demands of the position that she's retiring from. Okay.
Job description?
Yes, and just the demands of the position that she's retiring from. It's. We don't have the job description available, number one, and I don't know what this particular employee's responsibilities were. So if I could get an understanding of how. Of how this, because it, I just don't, I want to make sure that the employees aren't, aren't, the expectations aren't so far reaching that they can't achieve their, their job. Based on their job description and then the expectations, if that makes sense. Does anyone else have input on any of the resignations or the HR memo? Okay.
They were, I'm trying to find my notes on them, that's fine, I have them all open, they were numerous. So therefore I don't have them, I think you covered a couple of the ones I already had questions on. But I don't, I don't know where it is. I can't find it, I thought I had just it open. I have, I have the questions on.
Okay, that being said, I need a motion to approve the HR items as presented.
I'll move to approve the HR items as presented.
No second to that.
Having a motion in a second, all in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. Moving on to report and presentation agenda items, I would like to move the summer STEAM camp above the superintendent's report.
Yeah, it was the first thing I reported anyway, so.
Oh, yes, okay. Perfect.
So this week we've been privileged to get to do a STEAM camp, yeah, we're sort of excited, these are all the things that showed up. These are all the things that showed up, well, actually, we had some come ago, so this was down at my hands.
Excellent.
I'm just gonna kind of go through these and I'm gonna help you do a cool demonstration for you.
Okay.
So this was our science classes, and you'll see some of the cool demonstrations, and these guys will make sure, and those will do some of their favorite pieces. And we did art, because STEAM is also part of art. And here we have some archery, just because it involves archery, something that we don't normally get to do.
Right.
And here we have building, engineering, designing, and I think the biggest thing they found challenging was having to actually follow instructions. Because kids are super creative, but then they had to first follow the instructions, and they were like, oh, this is way too hard. Follow the instructions and then they can build their own projects.
Great.
And here we have things that pop, which is like my favorite class, so you'll see they're balancing some bubbles, we're gonna try to show you that one tonight. We have edible chemistry, so we made bread, we made lemonade, we did popcorn, all sorts of really cool things, and a little bit of coding in there. And then we have coding with Ozabots, and we're gonna show you a little bit of that, we're not gonna show you our Ozobot races yet, because we're just gonna do those tomorrow, so we're just learning a little bit, right now. And then this is coding with our Dash robots, and the cool thing was they learned how to shoot hoops, we did a little bit different things with them, so they had little challenges to go through. They wanted to show us quickly, we'll all take it for you. And the cool thing about this is it's the teachers guiding, teaching the kids, and the kids love being there, which is super cool, because it's, it's very hands-on. And they learn all sorts of things, so they have questions, lots of things that they're doing, and terminology, things the kids are coming up with, their terminology is amazing.
Cool, I loved it! Yay! That was so cool!
Yes.
Do a few little demonstrations, okay, so Heidi, I'm gonna have you introduce Ozabots. Why, you have, you go ahead and introduce yourself, so why is, each one's gonna introduce themselves, I'm gonna just stand there. You wanna come over and show us Ozabots? Okay, so you wanna introduce yourself? I know, I'm pretty on the spot, you're gonna go ahead. And then. Which is your favorite one you want to try out? Why is it pulling, what's taking it down the path?
The black marker shows, you know, you can make all kinds of different paths, and there are different types of codes, with different colors, or special markers, different special markers I can use to make different codes.
So this is all color-coded, which is kind of cool, for younger kids, so they don't have to do that.
That's fabulous.
So what they're gonna learn tomorrow is they can code a loop, and they're gonna have a race with it, so they'll figure out how to code it the quickest to make their loop go fastest, which is super cool. Because they can learn how to code and make the loop go, but to win the race, that's gonna be, that takes some challenge.
Out, I love it, I love it!
Thank you, you wanna talk a little bit about, I don't know that we're gonna help you set it up. Yeah, you wanna set up real quick, why don't we, we're gonna go on to the next one, you wanna share yours? Heidi, are you ready? And she does the same class, too, which is pretty amazing, and if you look at her spring, this is actually coded in, and the kids are learning all of those.
They crashed!
Perfect.
That is so cool!
Good job, Heidi, that's awesome. And they said that also they were, yeah, so.
That is amazing!
Okay, so Alex, you can go ahead and get your tape, you know, do you wanna show a couple of science experiments? Is it okay if I lose this? So she, she made, we made launchers in a stand count today, so we were, they learned how to aim those, their launchers, and so she wanted to show you this, but you have to be sure that you go aim out. Only at a target, right, so as soon as we go out of target, she's just gonna aim through the doorway.
Okay.
I'm just gonna show you how that works.
Ooh, look at that, that went far, that was awesome!
And then I told her she had to share my favorite one, which we'll see. So I don't know if you know, this pipe guts make really great bubble blowers, and they're like super cheap, so we use these a lot, and so what she's gonna do is kind of download bubbles on the glass, so.
Check it out, oh wow!
So one thing they ignore is different solutions are thicker, you can make a better bubble with better solutions, so they've been testing out different solutions throughout the year.
Oh, that's great.
So that's like one of my favorite things, Heidi, you wanna come share yours?
That is cool.
So Heidi, you brought yours, so why don't I just use yours? I brought a backup, Heidi's very responsible, no matter what you're doing after. So you wanna tell them what this is?
It's a lava, is it, did you say lava? Oh, neat!
So what's the label, can you tell us that it's a label first? And what's gonna happen, what is up that you're gonna put in? You know what that's called when it bubbles up? Remember what that's called? What's it called?
Coming dancing.
And it makes a, if you guys remember what it's called, I wasn't sure if you remember, anybody, chemical reaction? Yes, we're gonna make our chemical reaction. Maybe?
Oh, very cool!
Oh, I love it! It is lava, and that is, they make fun of it, it's super cool stuff, so the kids have been loving this all week, we just have a few more things we're gonna show you.
Okay.
Do you wanna do your next thing? I don't know, we'll just let it keep bubbling. Good job, Heidi, I like it. Do you remember what this is called?
Yeah, this is an airbag, and I'm gonna say that we're gonna be taking that.
If you just put a wire back in right now, there's no hope for you to get the bag, this teaches us first, we're unthinkable. I'd say you don't have a lot on your room. Not a lot, maybe a little. It's so pretty, it's principal, because that means it's like a bird, you have to reach to your mouth, tell you the name of it. Off the air, so like, it helps the bird to fly, so you'll have really strong feathers on the top.
Yep.
Oh wow!
That is cool! So they're moving about that way, so super cool, they keep up. Super job!
Good job!
You ready? Okay.
I don't get it, why do I have to write him to stay in this board?
You don't understand my writing, I didn't write it for you.
It says, you could keep him in this board, then why am I supposed to call him to stay in this board, which doesn't make sense.
So tell them a little bit about what you're gonna do, tell them about your challenges this week. What have you been doing with the Dash robot?
I've done challenges, like, I've done an obstacle course with them, very hard, because I'm very, I'm ahead of a lot of people in the class. We played with a launcher attachment, which I've never done, it's easy to learn.
So what'd you do with the launcher?
We tried to do basketball, and it didn't work, and then.
Well, I tell you what, the group this week did it as intended, so that means we're gonna have to work on you a little bit this summer. Do you wanna see if you can make it go around the cones?
Yeah, I can do that.
So they're all named, so they have a unique name, they also have a unique profile, that means I can use these for lots of different classes, so they're very versatile, and also they are learning coding through this, so. It's just really a fun, fun way to teach coding for kids.
Trial and error is the big part of this.
Trial and error, yes, for sure, which is good.
This is a tough piece to get through.
You can, you can put them, bring them up. Okay, we're gonna come back to you, okay? You worked on it a minute, so we're gonna have you share this, and then we're gonna come back to Alex, and then we're getting done. So can you tell us a little bit about your last thing that you're sharing with us?
These are the nice spots that we are doing in our coding classes, same as Dash robots, well, not the Dash robots, so we're doing some edible chemistry slash coding. And what you wanna do with this is you want to use the coding cards, you wanna make him go straight. And then, once he breaks, he can tap his nose, catch the cheese. And then, once he beats, with the blue eyes, that means victory, and I am following this card, and it should work, and then you put in, you use the coding cards, and then you put in the code. On the mouse robot, and then you move the card before you press the green button.
So why didn't you touch the cheese?
I don't know, sometimes they just go off during shooting.
Because their wheels are a little bit wonky, but yeah, normally that would be good. Good job. So usually I leave the coding cards down, so then you have a debugger, so as you go through, it gets far more challenging, then they can point to each card, they can figure out where your problem is, and they can fix it, so these are. These are like my beginning coding starter kits, so that the kids can build on that, and then they get more advanced as they go. Okay, you gotta give it one last shot?
Yeah.
Okay.
Trial and error is a big part of these robots. A very, very big part of these robots. He likes, he doesn't like the cones, he likes not liking the cones.
But that's okay, because we'll work more on it next year, right?
Yeah.
Okay, so now I know what to work with you on.
Yeah, he likes not liking the cones. Learned that from my niece. We've had several wars with these, and I told him less.
All right, guys, I think we are about done, thank you very much for watching.
Thank you, thank you!
You almost did it, you almost did it! Good job, buddy, that was not very much time for you to figure that out, and you did really good.
Yeah.
Well done, all of you did so great, and I loved it! It's been fun.
And you guys, can you guys also tell Big, tell him how great of a thank you that we need to give Ms. Anderson for her writing grants, and giving all this stuff, and ordering.
He's okay, he's okay, he's your friend.
That should be great.
Yes, she did.
Talk everything into the clubs, you're perfect.
You do an ankle drop.
No, not my ankle.
If you want me to bend his head.
Thank you guys for coming in tonight.
Yes, thank you. We appreciate learning.
Yeah, I want one.
I feel like, ooh, maybe you could use one of those little, the little ones in the door.
Ooh.
There you go.
There you go.
You could put a camera in it.
You're like, say hi to mama!
Yeah, absolutely. That's great. Well, the thing is, yeah, and what they don't understand is, even though this little robot didn't make the code, that was such an example of the coding world, I mean, that is part of the success, it's the failure.
I love child development.
Yeah. Oh, that's great, I love kids. So cute, I love that.
Love it, yeah, that was great.
That was nice.
If we could just do that all the time, that would be. I just wanna give a public opinion, because Julie Anderson is just absolutely amazing, and if you don't know her, she's just a heart and soul, she writes more grants than anyone at the budget team every week, but all year long. They got put on hold because of COVID, but people, she has more people on the waiting list to get in, and she's really dedicated and very.
Until you've taught a class like that, that's really hands-on, I don't think you realize how hard it is, it is really hard, because little, little people want to do and have hands, and managing that is.
Did you see how far she was?
I mean, see, that's what made me think about it, I'm like, oh, she is a saint, she does so good.
So any shout out you guys give her, because she really put her belief in, she will be full-time ALP back at Apple next year, now with the capital levy, deficit and all of that, and that's back on from the levy, so she will, she's full-time ALP at Apple next year.
What's an ALP?
An advanced learning program.
Okay, perfect.
And then we had to put that on, that was one of the things we had to put on hold because of the 6% holdback.
Okay.
So she taught second grade this last year, which she did absolutely wonderful, but she is going back to ALP full-time, and she's just wonderful, so.
Excellent.
Fabulous.
Thank you for letting us have that.
That was great.
Agenda was long, but I feel like that was, that's like really what we're all about, so.
Yes.
Yes, those are the kinds of things I'd like to see, is tips and what they do, yes, absolutely.
So this was the first part, just because I felt like that was most important, you can see they did it at Apple and. So, and these are all the things, just if you want to refer back to, that they offered, great things. So in follow, some follow-up things that you wanted to ask about, one of the trustees asked, where is it denoted as expanded, so I had verbally gone through this last time, I thought I should put it out in writing. Some admin have personal cellphone plans, so it's no district money, some maintain their own cellphone, because they don't want two cellphones, and they have a district plan, that's $50 a month for our public system. And then some people have a district cellphone and a plan, it's still $50 a month, but then the cost of the initial cellphone, we don't get the newest models, so it's, we usually just say we pay up to $199, is what it has been. Some people have bought their own, and then, but that's, and then, one of the trustees asked, well, where does the public know, and should this be a contract, so we did talk to CFO and looked at what, what we should do. And he said, in the monthly accounts payable report, it's denoted that that admin would be getting the $50 reimbursement, and it denotes that, so that's where the public can see that.
Okay.
Any questions about that? We did get the assurance letter, so if you click on that, we got from Eric Karanger, what it really says is. What it really, all these numbers say, I'm gonna boil it down to, is that we, our total debt capacity for our district is 261 million, blah blah blah, this amount right here. Right now, we only have this outstanding, this amount is due, so our debt capacity in our district is 257,595, so this line adjustment, or boundary line adjustment, is obviously way under anything with it. So he wrote an assurance letter here, this amount, this will come up later in the discussion about the plant facility levy, and maybe a future bond, and want to see if a wall assist major concerns is, is that we are dropping these off, and we won't. Cash rates are going down, and then once you tax, as people know themselves, once the tax rate, taxes come off your bill, people are not happy to put them back on, so, and that's part of our discussion later, but this is the assurance letter from Eric Karanger. For our boundary line adjustment.
And I apologize, I didn't get these questions out early, there's just a couple, what is the 5%? Because it, it says 5%, and I don't know what it is, 5% or why it's a 5%, and what that 5% is significant of. Do you see, there's, there's the 15 billion, and then right below that's 5%, and it's, it's, it's in both.
Sorry.
No, please.
I'm sorry, the legal debt capacity is 5% of that total amount, so it's 5% of that total 15, is that 15 billion?
Yeah.
Dollars, that, that's what the legal debt capacity is.
Okay.
Of that, of that, that total value.
Okay.
So that's what the 5% is, that's.
This is for the lanes, and then this is like, this right here.
Right.
And they're both the same, because.
They're both the same because that legal debt limit is, is not, is put in place. That is what the.
Okay, so just for clarification in reading this. Our total debt capacity that as a district we are allowed is 261. Well, that we will be allowed once the boundary lines are adjusted, 261 million. But our debt is going, I mean, because we only have 5 million in debt, we're going to be adjusted down to where we could accumulate up to 257 million. Is that a correct understanding? We're not there at all. We're not there. Please.
He's saying we have a, a large capacity because we have, our bonds keep coming off.
Great.
So we have, he's just saying like, we don't, we, we're good, you know.
Okay. Okay.
So if I can add to it, so the 5% is the limit according to the statute which he cited above.
Correct.
Um, that we may issue bonds shall not exceed 5% of that full value. And that full value is the total within the district, the assessed land value. So the value of the tax base, so to speak, cannot exceed 5%.
Okay.
A, a bond amount cannot exceed 5% of that value. So that's where he got the 5% was from that 331103 that he cited.
Okay, so in trying to understand what you've just, we have 5 million left on a bond that we previously, yeah, or, or bonds that we've previously acquired. And then if we needed to acquire more bonds, we could acquire up to 257 million. Okay, don't want to go there, but I just need to know where our boundaries are. Perfect. All right, I understand what he's provided. Thank you.
Okay, and then we talked about coach exit interview and the HR director is sending those out. So when those come in for the extracurricular coaches, somebody requested that last time. So we were doing it orderly, but I asked the HR director if she do, when those come in, she will share that information for.
Okay.
So we're following up to that. Again, back to the ISBA training follow-up request about a feedback loop for policies. So these are three policies we discussed with the admin team last week. The only thing, 2210P, the procedure with school closure. The team was defining safety because it just says in the policy, when it is safe to come in. And there was discussion about, well, that's a matter of perception. So what does that mean? So the team is working on that for us to be able to define it since it's a protocol. Then we are working on that to say when is safe at each school to come in, in the case of emergency closure. The high school graduation policy, 2700, no concerns. And 3020 enrollment and tenants, we discussed all three and no concerns on those either. Back to the website and the questions that members had about when it's archived and keeping change, track of all the changes for websites. And here's a spreadsheet from our web manager that he started. And so if you look that up at your own convenience and let me know if that meets the board's needs, that would be great.
Yeah, the only thing that I would like to note, if he could just add who's made the changes. So if we ever have to go back.
Sure.
And just initials is fine. Okay.
Pretty much it will just say his name, so because he's so darn fast.
Well.
It's hard for us to keep up.
Well, I know, but you had mentioned that within the elementaries, so just noting who's, who's done what. Okay.
And also Chrissy does our very front homepage, so there will be changes that Chrissy does too. So that's a great idea.
Okay.
I, it's come up several times and I just want to make sure we schedule this, Robert's Rules of Order workshop. If people could just, instead of putting it whole, we've finished most workshops that people have asked for. The board members have asked for. So this one has come up. I know we haven't done it. So if you would just let Christine or Orchard Thompson, so we can schedule that. Preferably the summer would be good, maybe after people up there. Kind of thing and then maybe after that. Anyway, I'd like to just make sure we follow through with that one. All right, we did get the links working on this. I know there was also some questions last time. SMD director Kelsey Badger is here, so I just wanted to make sure your links worked and if you had any other follow-up questions for that. Let me know.
I have, I think this was probably when I was out sick, when maybe this was discussed. This was all sort of new info to me somewhat. So from reading through all the documentation that was provided with those links, it sounds to me like we're turning Twin Lakes Elementary into a students with disability school? Like we're moving everybody in the district to that school? Okay, I, that's what it sounded like. We're taking those, I, I just don't.
So I, and I'll just quickly go for the matter of, just because they've all heard it, but I'll just recap it again and then we can certainly ask questions. Is we have life, elementary life skills students throughout the district and all of our six elementary schools.
Right.
Trusty Badger, I mean. Director Badger has gone and done research and had kind of put a plan together. And she actually has two classrooms full of students. That could be two classrooms. But I asked her to start with a pilot program. She did parents, talked to every single parent of these students. There's even a waitlist to get into the program. We have a life skills program from the middle level up. There's one at Lakeland Middle School and there's also one at Lakeland High School. This is taking this down to kindergarten so that this will be life skills program. And they also are with their life peers, the gen ed students for several times throughout the day. Completely inclusionary, but then to be there to address things that need to be addressed for the life skill students. They're in that program, similar to our six through 12 program.
Okay, I guess I need to understand it and see it more. I don't, I, it just all caught me by surprise and it's. Yeah, I, I, so I must not have a clear understanding because it sounds to me like we're putting all these students in one centralized location instead of leaving them with their peers, cousins, siblings, neighbors. We're moving everybody to one Twin Lakes Elementary. So, and I don't, I, I guess my concern is I don't know how we do that and not violate. And I'm sure Kelsey probably already has this, Director Badger, but how we are not violating all the federal laws and, you know, the least restrictive environment and according to the IEPs and I, I. So I guess I need more information on that. And I don't know if, it's hard because we have to discuss everything in public, right?
Yeah. Well, good evening. Thank you for your time. So to your point, least restrictive right now for what those students look like is assigning someone a one-on-one for them to be able to monitor them throughout their school day. That is actually the most restrictive environment that you could do to a student is put, tied an adult with them. So actually having a community where they can be with similar peers or same liked peers and be able to have, share those ideas in a group and build their own community in a life skills program actually benefits the students because they, they see each other and they know, oh, well, my peer is doing this, I can try this too. Whereas sometimes with our kiddos, they're compared to the gen ed population and they shut down because they're, they, they can't work as hard as them or can't do what they see. And so this and that community, bringing that community into one building, actually the research finding it has made huge growth for students with intellectual disabilities is what we're talking about when we talk about life skills.
So we're going to minimize the one-on-ones on the IEPs, then that's going to be a directive not to write one-on-ones in IEPs because it's more restrictive.
Well, every, every student, every student has unique needs. So every student, I'm not telling you that every single one of those students wouldn't need a still one-on-one because we do have some medically fragile students that still will need some of that help. But there are a lot of our kiddos that have a one-on-one that don't need that restrictive environment that will be able to not have a one-on-one, but be able to work in that community. And then still, when they go into classrooms, it would be more like two or three on one. So two or three students would go into the gym and classroom, do science or an activity that they're doing in there with a parent support as opposed to three adults in one classroom working individually with those students.
And then how did we choose Twin Lakes Elementary to be the safest location to do this and not back at the building where originally these types of students were, well, I know it was preschool, but if we're talking about those that are reading through the documentation, I have concern and about, you know, the fencing, the playground equipment and all that not being to these specific students' standards?
Well, so first, I did not want to isolate students. And so putting them in a different location where they're not with general education peers was not an option for me. I, that's something that I do not want. I want our peer, I want our life skills kiddos to very much still be part of. And so that wasn't an option for me. And then to answer your follow-up question, remember our life skills kiddos are currently in every single building.
Right.
So our buildings are all safe and equipped for them. So that when talking with buildings, Twin Lakes had their sixth graders that are moving to the junior high, which opens up a couple of classrooms. And so the classrooms that we're going to move into is in the, what they used to be a third grade hallway. I think title was also in there as well. And so they'll be right across the hall from each other and be able to have two classrooms where maybe you could have physical therapy or feeding and stuff going on. And then you could have the academic classroom. That's what we looked at. There wasn't another place without doing a significant amount of movement of, of all teachers that would have classrooms open like that.
Okay.
And also it's helpful to have our developmental preschool there as well. So then that, that program, some of those students will feed into that life skill. So that would be their community for longevity.
Is there a model that you know of that I can, that I can look at? Because we're really talking about increasing. You say it's not burning, but if we're moving these, we're increasing significantly this student population in a centralized location, which, I mean, are all the nursing staff going with them? And all the parents going with them? Because like you were saying, you know, feeding and whatever these students need, right? So I'm just trying to wrap my head around what this looks like. If you have a model or something I can get more information of where it's working somewhere, that would be awesome. That would be great.
All of the surrounding districts have it, but definitely I've been speaking really closely with Sam Point. So I've really modeled kind of similar what she's doing. I went up and observed. Cortland also have a couple of programs. Principal Milton and I and a couple others went and observed their life skills program and what that looks like. Their life skills program in Cortland is very large. And so they have like a K3 or K235 program there. And sometimes they keep some of their kiddos till sixth grade too. Because we're talking about kiddos that most likely will attend school until they are 21. They won't graduate when they're 18 with their similar peers. And so sometimes we hold them back a little bit just so they don't spend seven or eight years at one high school. And so, yeah, so we definitely modeled theirs. So Cortland and Sam Point have really worked closely with.
How many students do we have that are on either one-on-ones or that are going to need or that are in our life skill programs now that are dispersed at all the schools?
Yeah, so we have 21 K through fifth grade life skills.
Okay.
We're starting with 12 life skills. We try to keep our numbers a little bit lower because their need is higher. And so the nursing, like you were saying, we will increase nursing time if needed at, at Twin Lakes. Their one-on-ones, if they have those nursing or CNA needs will come up then. And so all that's there.
So what's going to happen to the other nine if we're only letting 12 and you're saying we have 21?
They're still in, for next year, they're still working with their one-on-ones as if they did this last year in their homeschool.
In their homeschool. Okay. And then from what I hear you saying, then as this is a transition, it would then be growing the population at Twin Lakes to be inclusive of all the kiddos that need the life skills development?
Yep.
Okay.
Similar like what we have at our Lakeland Junior High, our middle school and Lakeland High School as well. All schools in the district that need that come to those two locations, even if they're north.
Okay.
And what about if the parents don't want to participate?
Yep, it's parent choice. And so that is something that they can still continue to have a one-on-one and if they're happy to buy in their company.
I just know, I know a couple. I don't know too many, a couple that I watched go through all of Lakeland. And I just know how detrimental it would have been to them had they had to leave the Apple area, especially at a younger age and be removed from their, from their. And that's my only concern, you know, but if the parents can say.
Only, and we even have people on the waiting list. I just didn't want to start with more than one classroom pilot this first year. I thought we needed to start with one and then if it's successful and see what resources, how it goes. And then we could add the second classroom the next year based on how it goes this first year. And she's going to keep data, feedback, but it all is parent choice this first year. And as far as answering the questions about fencing, Twin Lakes Elementary has the highest amount of fencing of any school we have. So that's not the, that's not an issue at all.
I just know there's huge open areas at either end and at the, I mean, I don't know the status of all these students, but.
We have a couple actually of those students that will stay at Twin Lakes that are currently there that will just move to this program. And so they've been there. So the safety's there.
Okay.
Already successfully done that.
I mean, I'm sure you guys have all, already looked in. I'm just, you know, from my own brain, that's all.
Absolutely.
I just, if I'm going to give a okay to something or I, I mean, I feel responsible to make sure, you know, to ask all the questions. So. Alrighty, I will look at the surrounding districts and get more education on that. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, so the discussion is later on the agenda, but this is the information that we've been, been holding out to, so we have the time for explanation. So our plant facility levy is 1.146 million per year. This is the last year. It's a five-year. It ran back in March of 2017. We ran it concurrently with the instructional levy, both passed near 70%. Nice times. But this will be expiring in December of 2022. What that means is it expires and then you still collect the taxes throughout that next portion. So when I say that it needs, if we want to rerun something, it, when it expires, just like the instructional levy, we would run it again March of, of this next year, 2022. So even though it doesn't expire till 2022, you would run it in March. My recommendation would be, and what we've always done is run it in March of 2022. And then you're collecting taxes still from the prior, this one year that we're in right now. When it expires, then you can maintain your collecting taxes. There's no dip. That's, that's kind of how the cycle goes. But as you, as I've already told the board, my recommendation is not to run that March of 2022. I think with only passing the instructional levy with 42 votes was very tight. I think the climate and culture that I've heard and that we've heard at the district level is just, I think we need to do a little bit more education. I also think we have ESAR dollars that can bridge us for a while as long as we are very clear with the public of these are one-time monies. This is not sustainable funding source. This, if we want to maintain our facilities at the same level we have for the last five years, it will take a community input. It will take community commitment to continue those funds. So these are some ideas and the board may have other options. We should look at these and then discuss later on your agenda if there's other ideas. So one option is to address appropriate facility needs, which means that it needs specified parameters which are outlined in the ESAR requirements. New construction is pretty frowned on. If you are doing construction or adding portable, which we've already done, but if we had to add something else and you were showing that that was for social distancing because of the growth in enrollment, that can get approved, but everything has to get pre-approved for any construction. Any sort of construction projects has to be pre-approved with the state department first. So it'd have to go through the process with the school board. Then we'd have to submit that and the state department would have to approve that as well. So if we address appropriate facility needs, which would meet the specified parameters I was outlining in the ESAR parameters for one year, and then we could run the plant facility levy and the replacement instructional levy in March of 2023. This has been successful in the past and this is because the patrons do not say, oh my gosh, we're getting a new thing every year. They're just sending out something for us to pass every year. Instead, they go to the polls. It's every other year they're going to the polls and they're saying, this is what I, the district is asking for, for instructional, the supplemental levy, the instructional pieces they're asking for. The supplemental levy, the instructional pieces they're asking for. Here's the pieces they're asking for plant facility. It can be two separate items on the election and they can vote for one or both. I feel like that would make, all the district needs are identified at the same time and voters are not getting over electionized where they're trying, having to go every year. That's one option. The other option that could fit in that is you could put it, I don't, I didn't put it up because I don't think it's a good idea, but the board could choose. You can put plant facility levy needs into the supplemental levy. That is legal. Brian said they did it in Coraline all the time because it's just the two years. So instead of spreading it out and it's only fifty percent plus one. If you run plant facility levy, it's fifty-five percent. So there is a higher threshold and passed our instructional levy in March at fifty percent plus forty-two. So that is very tight. That's very tight. So I would think that separating it would be more transparent for the public to show the different things. It is an option to put it all into one lump sum. I also don't think the media would be kind to us. As we know from the last time Board Chair Thompson went with us to speak with the press and they put the whole kit and caboodle together and I fear that they might not identify that this is putting the plant facility levy in with the instructional and doing one lump sum. Anyway, it's, it's, it could be scary to run a plant facility levy if you don't get fifty-five percent and you don't have that money to continue to keep up our plan. And we have a number of projects which we've shared with you in the long-term, I showed by my goals this year of the long-term plans of what we have for projects in the district. Second option would, you could run a bond for new elementary school, see how the growth goes this year, what our enrollment looks like in the fall. We have the ten acres that have donated out on Meyer and Lancaster. And that, that's there. It's an option. Our bonds are coming, our indebtedness is coming off the books in twenty, the year twenty-three, twenty-four. It's very concerning. CFO Wallace is at the IAASBO Conference. He's the board president-elect for that. His organization, professional organization, that's where he is right now. Otherwise he'd be here. One of his major concerns is to have all of our bonds coming off and not to have anything going on. If it goes too far down, it's hard to get it back on the books. He said he, and he's been a lot of districts throughout this north west. He's been up and down coast and lots of different districts and he is very, that's when he talks to us, that is his number one concern. Is that if this all comes off the books and we don't have anything back on because we have needs, not just have something on the books, have it on the books, but we have needs that we need for plant facility issues, we really do. And as you know, we've moved sixth grade to the middle level. We have our first portable in the district that's going in. There's definitely things that we could address, even if the, even if the board chose not to have a new elementary school, but just look at needs at all eleven schools. What can we do with a bond to address some of the needs at each school? That's an option also. I'm just thinking, forward-thinking, an elementary school with the donated land and really doing a big awareness campaign, I think would be helpful. Another option maybe to run it this year in March of twenty twenty-two, so it doesn't come off the books. And then the board could certainly say, you want to keep it the same? Do you want to increase it, lower it? Do you want to go two years, three years, four years, five years? That's the board's option for that. I just hesitate just because of the vote last time. But it certainly can be done and there are awareness things that we could do to address it if that was the board's desire. And then other, any other ideas that the board may have. So that's later on the agenda. Okay, any questions?
Hey, I know you say we have some things to discuss later on the agenda, but I know we have some boundary maps for the trustees on the website, but do we have a map that shows the school boundaries and how many students, whether enrollment or ADA for each one of those school boundaries? And I know that the, the long-range planning facility was done, what, three years ago, almost four years ago and the shift, I mean, pretty much if you go north from one is all housing development. In fact, actually, if you go even more east of ninety-five. So I'd be curious to see if we had those numbers. If, if we do this and if the board was to decide that we do need another school or what have you, I would just like to know what those numbers look like.
Yeah. So we have the maps that Chrissy has when she's looking at enrollment and zones. And when people try to come out of districts or in district and transfer zones, we have those.
Okay.
Are you looking specifically for how many students are in each zone?
Yeah, I'd like to see what those boundary zones look like. And then how many students, whether enrolled, or I would like to see both numbers actually. Enrolled and ADA, you know, which I guess I could add up by schools, but it really doesn't tell me the zone, you know?
Yeah, we have enrollment by school.
Okay.
And then Chrissy would have a list of any that were approved for out-of-zone transfers. So like if they live in Apple, but their family works down here and they were allowed to come to. This year we didn't allow that because of the COVID and social distancing. We just really, so right now would be a good time probably. You think Chrissy to get the information because we didn't approve those out-of-zone applications?
Yeah, yeah, it is kind of difficult to put together.
Yeah. The, the other thing that Leon shared at our chamber meeting on Monday, the new construction are about a third of what they were at this time last year for new construction applications. Building permits are down in Rathrum and he's just the city.
Right.
But he's talking, he said they're down about a third. Like seventy, I don't want to misquote, but I think it was something like seventy-eight. It was almost that, three times that last year at this time. So I'm not quite sure if that's because of the lumber. I mean, I don't, he didn't know what to attribute it to, if that's the lumber prices or things have started to slow down or now with the COVID across the country slowing down or people moving in here less. I, he didn't, we didn't know what that was, but he did share that.
Nothing to buy.
Yeah, nothing, that's a good point, nothing to buy because it's out. Yeah, we've lost some teachers that we've offered positions to that were going to move here, but they could not find a house to buy. So they, we lost them. They would have come, but they could not find a house.
Yeah, rent anything. I mean, it's just, it's a bad market for all that.
Yeah, it is.
So we'll write that down for follow-up. And then when we get to the discussion item, if there's other pieces of information people want, that would be great.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Okay, moving on to the safety update.
Good evening, Board Chair Thompson and members of the board. As promised at the last meeting, I did a little bit of fact-checking for you with regard to the conversation we had about the use of Narcan in our schools. And you had specifically asked for me to touch base with our district's attorney and then also for CFO Wallace to reach out to our insurance carriers. We did both of those. I have a couple of links in here for you. This is just a protocol that was provided to us on the use of Narcan. If you wanted to take a look at that. This, the language on this slide, I just copied and pasted straight from the email from Megan O'Malley.
Okay.
So she indicated that, I know there is a relatively new statute in Idaho code that specifically talks about an opioid antagonist, which is what Narcan is considered. And her words to us really, we just need to make sure that people who are going to administer it are trained here and leave. And that as long as we are doing that and when it's good faith and reasonable care has been exercised, that we are immune from civil and criminal liability.
Okay.
So that was from Megan. And then from the district's insurance carrier, I actually copied the entire email that Brian had sent to me and it's right here. But this was the kind of the main essence of, the email is that again, as long as people are trained, then we are okay to be using that. And so I do have Nurse Judy here with me today to help me answer any questions you might have about Narcan. She is definitely up to speed on this particular treatment.
Okay.
She, she is aware, as I was made aware, that we can get Narcan for our schools
Okay.
at no cost to us through a grant. And we talked a little bit tonight about what training would look like, but I did let her know that when I spoke with the board last time, the analogy was that I felt like it would be very similar to how we handle EpiPens in our school. And she agreed with that assessment. So I will stop talking and allow you to ask questions of Nurse Judy if you have those. So I can just say that right now, we, we have two other emergency medications that we have in the district. We have epinephrine auto-injectors, these EpiPens, and we also have glucagon. And glucagon is the emergency medication for diabetics.
Okay.
When diabetic. So we already do training on those two things. EpiPen auto-injectors are actually basic first aid now. They're part of basic first aid. If you do American Heart or American Red Cross, that's part of basic first aid. So although they used to be kind of a big deal, they're still a big deal, but they're very simple to use. And so that's, and we already do that training. We do that training. When I do the CPR training for staff, that training is included. And then all the admin assistants in the district take a, take a, take and they get CPR first aid. And that's when we do the training for, for epinephrine. We could obviously do the Narcan training at that time. And then we do individual trainings for staff if, if they need, if they have a diabetic in the school. So we do the glucagon training for that.
Okay.
So the actual process of doing the training, I don't think would be difficult at all. You would just add it to what we're already doing. I know that Lisa said that Panhandle Health has a training program. I know that the National Association for School Nurses has a very expensive training program for Narcan. So I don't think having a training program or finding one would be difficult at all.
Okay.
It's a, it's a pretty, it's one of those medications that works great when it's needed, but even if you use it and you don't need to, it doesn't have any implications to having bad side effects.
Okay.
So it actually does nothing. So if you gave it to me and I am not overdosing on opioids, it really doesn't do anything to me.
Okay.
So it is kind of a fail-safe medication. You know, I mean, hopefully we never have to use it. That would be ideal. But there has been some issues in the North Idaho-Corlaine area in the last probably two or three months with some teenagers dying from overdoses and fentanyl seems to be kind of a problem right now, which is very unfortunate.
Right.
I don't know if you're familiar with fentanyl, but it's fifty times stronger than heroin. So it's a really awful, awful drug. And so, yeah, if we could push something in somebody's nose and save their life, that would be, I mean, to me, that's kind of a no-brainer.
Do we track everyone's training and make sure?
Okay, yeah, we do track. So we keep a list, I, yeah, of who trains for what. Yeah, so we could certainly, we would track that also. And I'm assuming, I mean, I don't even know what the expiration time is for Narcan. So I, I don't know how often we would have to get the replacements, but we do the training annually, no matter what. So we, we just do.
Okay. That sounds great.
Any other questions about Narcan?
I'm just sad we have to have these conversations.
I know, it is.
That's all. It's so hard. Yeah, but I guess that's what we have to do.
Interestingly enough, I was just in Oregon and a couple of things about Narcan. First of all, I went into a Walgreens and it's just, you can just buy it in Oregon, like any of us could go in and buy it. Which is pretty crazy. And the other thing is, is that my sister has stage four COPD and she actually has been prescribed morphine drops that she takes orally to help her breathe. And they gave her Narcan, nasal Narcan to have on hand in case she overdosed, so had, in case she accidentally took too much. So it's kind of, it's just kind of a standard of practice anymore.
Right.
Unfortunately, with the opioid issues, it's just kind of and where we're at. I did request that the board take action. It's on the action agenda tomorrow.
Okay.
Thank you. Judy Leaks, I just want to acknowledge about the, this has been the year for school nurses, the hardest year ever probably in her a hundred and two years that she's been working. She told me she's been working here a hundred and two years, but I just think she's the lead nurse and she has done amazing things. We could not have done this year without her. She has been absolutely just unbelievable, irreplaceable this year. She's been so wonderful. So I do want to thank you.
It's been a tough year.
Yeah, and you've been absolutely just an almost. We thank you for that.
Yeah, yes, thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you very much.
For sure.
Okay, and then the other item that I wanted to discuss with the board tonight is just an update on where we are with the interviews for a new armed guards. The Board Chair Thompson participated in those interviews last Thursday. We did not have a clear candidate coming out of Thursday. We we just, there was a, it was tough. That interview process was tough. So I, I had a conversation with Board Chair Thompson about some things that I was thinking about. And was thinking, one of my recommendations would be that we not make a decision to hire right now based on the candidate pool that we currently have and we reopen it and continue to have an armed guard position posted and then do interviews again. Our three current armed guards have all said they're willing to cover all five schools in the fall if we don't have somebody in place because it is a very long process. And we have a position open for two or three weeks and we would have to go through, just hope that we will get more candidates. So in that conversation, out of that conversation, another option came. So I'm going to present that to the board. And that is to, rather than reopen, is to move forward with an MOU with the county since we know that they're very interested in having an SRO in our district. And having that in place, starting in the fall. And that person would be split between Twin Lakes Elementary and Garwood. I have for you the cost of what we pay, our part for Spirit Lake Police, Ratchet Police, and Cooten County Sheriff. I would recommend to the board, and I did have this conversation at the budget team meeting, that if we change, if we create an MOU that says we're going to pay sixty-five percent or seventy percent of the cost for Cooten County Sheriff, I would ask to, in recognition of the strong partnership we have with Spirit Lake and Rathrum, that when we reissue those MOUs for next year, that the, that percentage is the same. It's not going to be the same dollar now because Cooten County is able to pay their officers more than the other two. But at least we could be paying the same percentage. I would feel better about that. And then it is our, from the district safety task force, it is our recommendation and has been that we continue to work for having at least an SRO or an armed guard at all eleven of our schools. And so I would, I would request that we continue to work with that. So I am interested in feedback from the board and I'm happy to answer any questions.
So are you opening up the position for the armed guard again for applicants or are you asking if you should be doing that?
Well, I, I, my recommendation to the board right now would be that we move forward with the MOU for Cooten County. Simply because I'm just not sure what the candidate pool is going to look like if we open it again. And we know we're going to get a quality person from county and we know that they're very anxious to have an SRO in our district. I know we had talked about doing both. I did broach that conversation with the budget team also. And CFO Wallace's biggest concern, as I knew it would be, was we didn't, we budgeted for one, not two this year. And so we would have to talk about what that, how that, where that's going to come from if we move in that direction.
Okay.
But the goal would be to have one at both of those schools at some point. So I'm just looking for feedback.
Okay.
Do we know the dollar difference between, or can we guesstimate what the additional dollars will be if we re, resign the MOU with Spirit Lake and Rathram? The, the increased cost there, do we know?
It will be minimal, like $4,000, $3,000 to $4,000 each one.
And so Cootney County asks us to pay 40%?
They want it 70%. And the reason for the 70% is they are actually, the captain and the sheriff are trying to avoid going to the county commissioners for permission because we've gone four times and they've given us a resounding now every time. And, and so their way around that is they have marine dollars that they can pay for a deputy for, for the three months of summer, basically, to be on the water. And that money is generated through boat registration and the little $10 tag that you, the non-invasive species tag. So in the captain's mind and the sheriff's mind, if, if we have that person for nine months and they have that person for three months, they can use their marine money to pay for their part and we would pay for the school year part. And since the marine money pays for 30% of their person, they're asking us to pay 70%. And so when we were talking and finally got to the point where we just couldn't get terminated to get it, his last offer was, well, it's basically $10,000 difference between the 60% and 70% for the district. And he said, can we just split it? And you pay $5,000 more than the 60%, so whatever that percentage comes down to, but it wouldn't be 70. And then they would figure out how to pay that over $5,000.
Okay. So it's the current MOUs we have, then we do a 60/40 and the county must have been asking the 70/30. Okay.
Yes.
I knew I had those two that fit somewhere, okay.
So we have somebody that we do this with, with Spirit Lake and Rathram. What's keeping us from, will they only give us one or could we?
They're struggling to. Because their budget is also limited and they can't take anybody anymore off patrol and they don't have permission to hire additional specialists within the building.
Well, and Garwood and Timberlake are in the county.
Sure.
They're not soliciting.
So my other question would be, if we went with the sheriff's office, this deputy is already a deputy. So what happens if we say, okay, we'll do it, but we continued to advertise and then we hired somebody? And then said?
We would have him at one building and an armed guard at the other.
Okay, I see what you're saying, okay.
So it's a commitment that we make to them for a certain period of time, okay?
Yeah, I know, it's good for them.
Okay. When we solicited for the last levy, did we not promise the constituents we would have two armed guards? We would be hiring two armed guards? What was, what was?
On this last levy that just passed?
No, the one prior.
It was promised that we would have one armed guard shared between Twin Lakes and Garwood.
Okay. So if we were able to find the money for hiring an armed guard and we entered into the contract, we'd actually be exceeding what we said to our constituents, which wouldn't be a bad thing. But it, it comes with a price tag. I get that, I get that.
For the levy, we went to the board and said, we recommend us adding more armed guards. And the board said no. So I feel like that would be going against what the board said because we, Lisa and I actually asked for that and the board voted against it. So we don't, we can't just pull the money out of somewhere else. We're going to have to cut it somewhere if we do add it, so I just.
This board said no?
Lisa and I brought, Trustee Bain wasn't on it. We brought you the levy projections and we asked for four armed guards.
No, I, I, I hear what you're saying. I'm just trying to make good on the levy before that, where we told constituents one thing and we still haven't met that, those goals.
Yep, that's what I think that she's trying to address by saying, let's move forward with this SRO with the county, even though it's more money and we have less, the district has, the board has less control over it because it's a honor, a Cootney County Sheriff's Office employee. It's a little bit more restrictive, but it, it, at least we're following through with what was promised to the voters.
Right, that's what I feel like.
Yeah.
We really don't have a choice but to do it because in my brain, I think like, well, we already got the money because they voted for the levy.
Right, yeah, we definitely have to be one or the other for sure. I just, I'm, I'm, I guess I'm bringing it to you. Well, one, I wanted to update you on how the process went. And two, this recommendation actually has us spending more money than we would have spent had we been successful with the armed guard interview process. And the other thing, I just, I want to make sure the board members are kind of keeping in the back of their minds with regard to SROs is that there's, even though we have an MOU, there's still law enforcement officers. And if there's a call in that vicinity, they're leaving our schools to go take care of the call. They, they're not in our schools all day long, even though we're paying 70% of their salary, they're still police officers. And so that's the one, that's probably the biggest benefit for us in my mind with regard to the armed guard, is that they're our employee and they're where we want them to be all the time.
Yep.
When we want them to be there. So there's a little bit of a give and take, but I just, it's such a long process to hire an armed guard and I just don't know if we're going to get different people applying right now.
So are you thinking if we move forward and say yes to the county, then it would be at the end of next school year, maybe try this process again? Is that what you're thinking?
We would have to, it would have to be part of the budget conversation because CFO Wallace would have to make sure that he's intentionally budgeting that into the, and again, if there aren't new dollars, although they're, you know, they get money from the state. But if there aren't new dollars, then if we have to decide, sometimes it's just a hard decision. We have to decide, do you want, is there something we are willing to cut to make sure that this happens?
So we're paying more money if we go with the MOU. I wonder if it would be a good idea to offer that same amount and run that position again, but the same amount we'd be, we'd be paying, maybe we would get more of a response. There's an idea.
We would have to, I would, I would guess we would have to increase the pay for the three existing armed guards.
Okay. Sure, sounds only fair, sure, sure.
And we certainly could look at that. The thing that, so the three armed guards we currently have are so invested in this program and care so deeply about what they do that they, they just had some really big reservations with regard to the candidates that we were looking at. And I'm sure they wouldn't turn down more money, but when you have, when you're a retired law enforcement officer and you're getting a pension and then on top of that, you're getting, you know, paid what a starting teacher is getting paid, that they're actually making really good money. And we had, we had several retired law enforcement officers who applied. So it would have been, I think it would have been, I don't think it's the money. I just don't think we got the right problem this time.
Okay. That's the case for a lot of positions right now, though, so.
Yeah, when we interviewed for the other three positions, we, they were so amazing, the three that we have, so amazing that they just rose to the top of them. They're like, oh my gosh, we have to hire this person. We, we didn't, that just wasn't the case. Something we could definitely think about and maybe we think about that over next year and through the budget season for next year as far as what we want to do about pay for the armed guard. I just feel pretty strongly that we need to have something in place on September 7th when kids come back to school. And I can't guarantee if we go through the armed guard interview process again that that's going to happen just because it takes so long. The other thing that kind of keeps in the, that this might be fortuitous for us. A lot of the equipment that we have to purchase for our armed guards, like the rifles, are 11 months out because nationwide we're having this big shortage of guns and ammunition. And the county already has their own weapons, we don't have to purchase those. So this could be helpful in, in today's environment with the scarcity of some of the things that we would need to purchase.
Okay.
So we are committing more money, I guess that's why I wanted to make sure the board was informed about.
Okay, thank you.
And with your blessing, if that's the direction that we go, I will reach out to Captain Miller tomorrow and schedule a face-to-face meeting so I can sit down and have a conversation with him about moving forward. And then Chair Thompson and Trustee Grissom and I talked about, as part of the policy committee, looking at our current MOU, just because we hadn't in a while, make sure that the language is all up to date and then we can move forward with all three of our agencies with the same document.
Yeah. That would be important. So if we don't move forward with hiring an armed guard, I mean, like opening it up, going through the process again, when would we be doing that?
That would be, I guess, our question.
Okay. Okay.
Where, and I guess where we want to go. I, at some point, I would love to just be able to sit with the board and have that conversation and hear from the five of you collectively, you know, where, what your vision is for this program and what you really would like to see so that I can help us navigate and get there.
You could workshop.
Not a presentation, just workshop. Just sit down and talk, that would be fabulous. Because if it's, it's definitely my goal to have an armed guard or an SRO at our school, but it may not be, that may not be the goal of the board. And so I would be interested to know what the collective thought is. So I know how to navigate that and move forward.
Okay.
I have no further questions.
So I'm happy to have your blessing to move forward with the, does that make me an action item? I don't think so, because it's higher and it's just now. I don't think so, because I think it's just an action of this hiring process, but I, we are committing more money, so I just want.
Okay, does anyone have input that would, does anyone not want to move forward with committing an MOU to the Cootney County Sheriff's?
No, I don't.
So you want to move forward?
Correct.
Sorry, okay.
The only thing I would ask is like you did for us with the others, if you would bring us the MOU so we can see it?
Before we sign it?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
And I can't do that until it's through the list.
Right.
Get it ready to present.
Okay, yeah, I would say move forward with it. Thank you, Lisa. All right, moving into action items. The first action item is the classified salary matrix. Does anyone have any comments? What the, okay, hold on, I have to make it bigger. And one bigger. Oh, too big. Anyone have any questions or comments?
Which one are we addressing first? Is it the H1 under action items?
Yes.
I have no questions. I don't think.
I would like to know where, I, I thought I had heard, I'm just asking for clarification. Were people, were different titles moved to different columns?
So, yeah, what happened, this was very labor intensive.
Yes.
And I really appreciate you guys allowing me to bring this back to you and I hope you guys have some grace and understanding about how labor intensive this was. But when I went in and I started placing people, I did find that they weren't appropriately placed.
Okay.
And so I had to make some adjustments that way. And then the gray that you guys see on the bottom, those are more like shadow rows, rows. We wanted to take off more rows, but we had veteran employees in our district that were already making more than where we were ending it.
Okay.
And so we had about 22 of those people and I highlighted those in the list.
Okay, okay.
This does look like a lot of work. And it probably takes a lot of brain power too, because you've got to work through all those numbers.
Yeah, and I mean, it is, I mean, the district is going to take, you know, a brunt of this this year because of all the changes and stuff. But we still aren't in line with even our fast food places around here. And so it's just, this is the best we can do. But again, you know, we have people, you know, that because of the going into another column, they're getting more than a 6% increase, but that's because of their hard-to-fill positions.
Right.
And so, I mean, it was the best we could do.
And we only have one position that falls in F? Okay, okay. Not a worry. I think that's interesting. Okay. Does anybody have any other questions or comments on the salary schedule? Okay, then may I have a motion to approve the classified salary matrix as presented?
So moved? One second, Pat.
Having a motion in a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. The next item is a classified list for the 2021, 2022 school year that identifies the classified placement. And it does say, and letters of intent. Was there something else that was supposed to be attached to this or is it just the?
This is basically what the board approves as far as salaries and hours and what I can send out to our classified staff. It really, it's not a contract, it's a letter that states that they have a job. So we know, you know, who's coming back and it's kind of their security blanket as well.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions or comments?
No, I answered my question.
Okay, perfect. Then can I have a motion to approve the, excuse me, classified list for the 2021, 2020, 2022? All the twenties. Next year, the 2021, 2022 school year. And someone can reword that easily.
So moved.
Oh, man.
One second, Pat.
Having a motion in a second, all in favor, say aye. Aye, any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. Moving on to the classified administrator list for the 2021, 2022 school year. This is the salary matrix. Does anyone have any questions or comments? Yes, there are.
So the admin salary matrix is the one that we're?
This is the classified.
Going over?
Yes.
Classified.
Okay, okay. No, I didn't have any. Okay, okay. No, I didn't have any questions on that.
Okay. You two ladies? Okay. Then can I have a motion to approve the classified administrator list for the 2021, 2022 school year?
We approve the classified administrator list for the 2021, 2022 school year.
I'll second that.
Having a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. Moving on to the stipends, there was we need to approve the stipends as presented. And I believe these are the stipends that are going out as of June 2021. There's a board memo attached to help clarify what the stipends are. Because there's an abbreviation, which was a little confusing for those of us that don't know all the lingo.
And I apologize. Those are our pay codes.
Okay.
And so that's how we attach the payment to what the assignment does.
No.
And so I try to clear that as best as I can. I went through this. The one that I saw that I didn't have on the list is summer school.
Okay.
And so that was some SC, like Frankie Myers is one that you'd see that code.
Okay.
And then the ones that are just regular stipends. The majority of those are just the custodial stipends that I explained.
Okay.
And then Carrie Paquette, she also has that code, but that's that college and career in which she gets a stipend based off of enrollment and other extra duties that she did there.
Okay. We do also have a stipend banned for it.
Yes, that's per our negotiated agreement.
Okay.
We typically give out those stipends in October.
Okay.
But we didn't have any evening performances due to COVID.
Right.
Well, this particular band teacher ended up having one evening performance.
Okay.
So we did reverse and per the negotiated agreement.
Okay.
So this stip two that you have there for the pay code, what, what was that one?
Well, it's because like, are you looking, looking? She had to, I can't use the same pay code for different stipends. So she received, that person received two different stipends.
Okay, gotcha.
And the stipends could be for something other than the breakdowns that we received, correct?
Yeah.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions or comments regarding the stipends? I do want to ask, this is the stipends that are being paid out. This is from funds we've already received, correct?
Once again, clarifying what the memo said, those leadership stipends, we have to use them or lose them.
Okay.
And so, and then we did have those professional development funds are allocated from the state. The, the custodial ones do come out of just a regular general fund.
Okay.
For salaries.
Okay. Now, what, just curious, what happens if we don't use all the stipend money? What happens?
The leadership stipends or the others, the leadership stipends, they were put on hold with the 6% holdback to the governor. So our district chose not to do them.
Right.
Then all of a sudden I did it, one of my updates a couple of months ago, I told the board that the governor gave the money back. And they said, if you don't lose it, we're going to lower your budget by that much next year.
Okay.
So some districts chose to pay their leadership stipends just out of their general fund. They could easily move those and shift to keep the money in their general fund. We chose not to spend money out of our general fund and get these leadership stipends. So then at this late date, we didn't want to go back and give stipends for people from the beginning of the year.
Okay. But what I hear you saying is if we don't utilize all the money, then come next year, we won't be receiving the same amount.
Starting July 1 with that budget, they would delete, they would decrease it. And that's the first time they've done that. It's a brand new legislative thing.
How kind of them.
They would decrease it.
Okay.
So they use every single penny. And that's where I told you, there was like this little bit left over. I said, give that to Nurse Judy. So you see it bottom out? And I said, if you see that to Nurse Judy, I said, she has worked harder than anybody in the district. And it was a small amount left. I said, I told her, we have to use every penny and they'll decrease our budget. So give that part to Nurse Judy. That's why there's that little bottom out.
Okay.
It's there.
So Trusty Grissom, did you have any other questions on the stipends?
I did, I did. I think they already got answered.
Perfect.
It would have been nice to see them totaled though and totaled by type on all the different, all the money numbers, you know? So you could see, oh, this is what we gave here, there. But I know, can't do that in a PDF, so. A spreadsheet would be good, but I don't have any questions.
That's good feedback.
Yeah. That'd be great. All right. So then can I have a motion to approve the stipends as presented?
So moved. Second.
Hearing a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries.
I, I thank you and so is our payroll person. She matched.
Well, I think those that are within our district that have, have definitely earned them and more.
Absolutely.
Moving on to the Narcan for emergency usage in school. This was talked about in the safety presentation by Ms. Sexton. Are we not being recorded?
No, we are.
Oh, okay.
I just switched the camera back from presenter.
Oh. That might not be a bad thing. So would we like to have any discussion on implementing Narcan within our schools for an emergency use?
As far as I'm concerned, everything was covered pretty well in the presentation.
Okay. Then can I have a motion to a motion to bring Narcan for emergency usage in schools?
I'll make a motion to bring Narcan for emergency usage in schools.
I will second that.
Having a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. And with respect to that, I don't know if I need to change it, but have a motion to use Narcan.
Okay.
Do I need to change that?
We can.
Okay.
Sure. Okay. I will make a motion to use Narcan for emergency usage in schools.
Second that.
Having a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. Okay, we are on to the speech language pathologist assistant job description. Do we have any comments or discussions regarding this job description? I thought we had also asked for the speech language pathologist to see what their job description is in comparison to the assistant. Because I couldn't find one, but I thought that was brought up at one of the board meetings, but I could be mistaken. Okay, okay.
We can get that to you.
Okay, I would appreciate that.
Would you like Director Badger to answer that for you?
Um.
With the dress up for you, or do you want to just look at a job description?
Well, it would be nice to understand. And Director Badger, you can tell me if you want to chit chat over this or if you just want to send the job description. But to understand specifically what the speech language pathologist does that the assistant will not be doing, or is the assistant doing some of the pathologist's job? I mean, are they working? How, how does it all work?
Yeah, there's definitely some things that our, our speech and language pathologists don't want the assistant doing in our district. However, Asha says that she can do that. One of those would be providing services for like articulation, sub sounds. That would be something. The state of Idaho says that absolutely an assistant can do that as well as a para.
Okay.
But our SLPs have stayed, you know, some, I guess, to say that they don't want to provide that. Our assistant right now helps provide group therapy.
Okay.
And so a lot of the language therapy instead of our speech. And she also helps with uploading some paperwork for our SLP toolkit is what it's called for how sessions went. And then she organizes our Medicaid for our SLP assistant to bill. She cannot bill, an assistant cannot bill for Medicaid. They should have a license to bill in the back. And so that would be one area that our SLP have to do that she can't do.
Okay. But yes, I would also like to see the job description for the speech language pathologist. If we can get that, that'd be great. No. I. Okay, that being said, can I get a motion to approve the speech language pathologist assistant job description?
I will move to approve the speech language pathologist assistant job description. I'll second that.
Having a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
No, but I'm going to abstain because I just don't feel like I have enough information to make a decision. I, I just I'm torn with the things. I'll abstain from voting.
Okay. Hearing three As and one abstain. Oh, does any, okay, motion carries. I still have to figure out how to say all that stuff. Okay, next we have the Timberlake High School 2021, 2022 Student Council Leadership Retreat.
Sounds like a lot of fun. I didn't pick the date, no. I think it's a great idea. Yeah. I didn't have any questions.
Nope.
Anybody else questions, comments?
No.
Okay, then can I get a motion to approve the Timberlake High School 2021, 2022 Student Council Leadership Retreat?
I'll move to approve Timberlake High School's 2021, 2022 Student Council Leadership Retreat as presented.
I will second that.
Having a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. Moving on to board policy. We have some new policies and some updates to policies. The first policy presented is new policy 2120, program evaluation and diagnostic tools or tests, excuse me. Does anyone have any questions, whoa, or comments about this policy?
Nope. It looks really good.
Okay.
One of them, I'm not sure if it was this one. I'm trying to see if this is the one I heard.
No worries.
No, it was 2140.
Okay. All right, that being said, can I get a motion to approve Policy 2120 Program Evaluation and Diagnostic Tests?
I'll make a motion to approve the new policy 2120 Program Evaluation and Diagnostic Tests. I'll second.
Having a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. Moving on to an update to Policy 2140 Student and Family Privacy Rights. And 2140F Student and Family Privacy Rights Consent Form. I believe we previously did not have the form. And we did have a language update on the policy. Does anyone have any comments, questions?
I, I do. At the, so at the bottom of the policy, on page three, it says, note, this policy must be adopted in consultation with parents and it gives a federal code USC 20 da, 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 da. Therefore, ISBA recommends that at a minimum, the board specifically note this on their meeting agendas and request public comment prior to the adoption. So did we do that?
No, we have not. Okay, so we will table the approval of this one. We can add it to the July and will request parent or public comment. Yeah. Yes. No worries.
We do. Update this weekend. We do need to get public comments for our operational plan to get some ARC money. So if we're going to do it, we could put maybe.
Do it all together?
Yeah. If there's anything else the board wants input, but that, we could put those two together.
Okay.
To do that.
That would be great.
Are you thinking on the web, Trusty Grissom, are you thinking on the website? And Skylar?
Skylar, yeah.
Facebook.
Facebook.
Yeah, just, I mean, I think that's good enough.
We don't need to mail her.
Oh, no, 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 I don't think that.
Okay. All right. So that's what I was, I'll put both the two together.
But I like mailers. No, just kidding. Just had to throw that in there. All right. Next item is an update to Policy 2520 Curricular Materials. This one, I believe. We did. There was some language that was changed. Oh, wait, let me look at them. Nope. Trying to see which one. Is it this one? Okay, no, it was 2540. So on 2520, there was some language corrections or suggestions by ISBA. This is a policy we did have in effect. It's just hasn't been updated in quite some time. Are there any questions or discussion on this policy?
Lovely.
Okay.
Can you tell me? Because I think once again, this was one of those, I thought I read through this that I was sick. Does it notate that? I see the part about the committee, but in keeping the statute. The hands on, whether it's electronically or physically, I think the statute says that at any time the public can request material or should be able to. We're supposed to have a, a central repository available to the public at any time, but I'm not sure that that's in here and I'm not sure.
The very last statement does state, a complete and cataloged library of all curricular materials and all electronically available curricular materials adopted in the immediate preceding three years shall be maintained at the State Department of Education. That was brought out and it, we have not been doing that. Is that correct?
And that's, yeah, that's the statute.
Yeah. So we are going to be doing that. There was.
Let's see what they, what they're citing here. 11A, I think it's just the curriculum definition. Two is the committee in the curriculum. I think that's where it might be in 512. Either that or it's in the parent statute about the. statute about the parental rights and education and their influence.
Okay. Well, I.
We can always bring it forward, we can take it as it is and then just bring it back to the table and add it and I'll take the time to find it. But I'm pretty sure that the, in the statute, it says that we physically have to maintain at a central location, whether it's here at the district office or somewhere where.
Well, during the curriculum workshop, Dr. Meyer did bring up the fact that we may take that cat closet and create that as sort of a curriculum warehouse where everything that's utilized in the district, one copy is housed there so that a parent can look at it.
Yeah.
We also did discuss that the display of curriculum will occur on an annual basis for parents to peruse and provide input, et cetera. But if we do need to include that type of language in this particular policy, then yeah, definitely I do want to have that added. Would you like to table this or would you like to?
We can pass it, we can just bring it back.
Okay.
And I don't, I don't want to just leave it hanging up.
No worries. Okay, so then if I could get a motion to approve the update to Policy 2520 Curricular Materials.
I'll make a motion to update to the policy to approve the update to Policy 2520 Curriculum Materials.
I'll second that.
Having a motion in a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. Moving on to the update to Policy 2530 Learning Materials Review. This one was an update, there was minimal change. Specifically, we did add the language referring to the Uniform Grievance Procedure, which we have, it was, it was named something else and we've named it now the Uniform Grievance Procedure. So we have updated so that the references parallel. I don't recall that there was much more in there that needed to be updated. Does anyone have any comments or questions or discussion items for that policy?
No.
Okay. And can I get a motion to approve the update to Policy 2530 Learning Materials Review?
I'll second that.
Having a motion in a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. Moving on to the update to Policy 2530 Learning Materials Review. Oops, wrong, thank you. There's so many on here. Moving on to the new policy 2540 Selection, Adoption and Removal of Curricular Materials. This is a new policy that we did not previously have. What was recommended, we did add some changes on the selection and adoption to parallel 2520. It didn't quite parallel it and that was a concern. But now it does. So does anyone have any questions, comments or discussions on this policy?
I don't.
Okay.
There, there is there's a strikeout in what's, so this looks like maybe it was.
Oh, I see.
Yeah, that's my well, we used to do that, I'm not really sure what was before, what was, okay. The previous comment I was making about the on hand is actually in the statute that we cited, the 512A, which talks about the committees. So maybe we can just take some language out of the statute and add it to that 512A. About the, each school district shall have on hand and available to the public the titles, authors and publishers of all curricular materials being used in the district. The public has a right to inspect instructional materials except students' tests used in the district schools.
Okay. Yeah, we can definitely add that language.
Yeah, we recite the code at the bottom, we just didn't have any language.
Okay. So then I would like to okay, Chrissy, Chrissy, how do I do this? On, we approved Policy 2520. I would like to resend that. Can we do that? I mean. Okay, how do we, do I just say, let's resend? Okay, because I want to move, I want to table 2520 and 2540. We'll address it in policy committee tomorrow and then we'll bring it back at the July meeting. Okay, for approval. Because I would much rather have it cleaned up once than to have to keep approving it and bringing it back. Are you okay with that?
Yeah, I just didn't want to drag it out any longer than that. I think we all have to vote to rescind.
Oh, oh, thanks. Okay. Can I have a motion to resend the previous motion to update Policy 2520 Curriculum Materials?
I think I'm the one that made the motion, so I'll make a motion to rescind the update to Policy 2520 Curriculum Materials.
And I'll second that.
Having a motion in a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. And then we will table Policy 2540 and Policy 2520. And we will bring them, them back at the July meeting.
So I'll second that motion.
Oh, thank you. Having a motion in a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. Okay, so now we know we Policy 2570 Use of Commercial Video Recordings and 2570F Form Parental Movie Opt-Out and Consent Form. Do we have any questions or comments on this policy? There was significant language added. And it is, I believe, a new policy. Correct? Hold on. Keep bouncing back and forth. No, it's an updated policy, but there was significant language change within the policy. Some of it had to do with statute, I believe, if I recall. Specifically pages, page three, starting at an educational exemption all the way through G on page four, that was all added. And I think it had to do with the Copyright Act. If I recall. And then the form we did not previously have, I believe. If we did, it wasn't on the it wasn't in the thingy. But does anybody have any other discussion or questions regarding either of those policies?
No.
Okay.
There's a strike through on this one.
On the form or the 2570?
The policy itself.
Policy itself.
Yeah, on page two.
Oh, I see that. Okay, so if I can get a motion to approve the update to Policy 2570 Use of Commercial Video Recordings and 2570F Parental Movie Opt-Out Consent Form with the strikeout removed on the policy.
So moved. I'll second that.
Having a motion in a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. Next is an update to Policy 3255 Student Dress. This is a policy that was updated. The policy has been enhanced to sort of give better guidelines to principals and staff within the schools as to the intention of the policy. Does anybody have any discussion, questions, comments regarding this policy?
And I did not catch that when I first read that.
No worries.
Well, we have a statement on page one, the third paragraph from the bottom. We might need to be more specific because it reads head coverings are inappropriate in the school building.
Okay.
Is there a statement in that policy regarding any religious beliefs?
There is. At the end, accommodations, "The district will seek to accommodate cultural, religious and ethnic differences in dress and grooming. Provided such dress and grooming does not materially or substantially disrupt the educational process of the school to create a health or safety hazard for students, staff or others." Okay, with respect to head coverings, though, do you think there needs to be more of specificity?
Well, I don't know what else we would be talking about other than hats.
You know, I just thought I'd throw it out there. A bandana, maybe, that covers, I don't know. But, all right. So yes, but we are acknowledging cultural gravy. Okay. Any other input, comments or discussion? Okay. Then can I get a motion to approve the update to Policy 3255 Student Dress?
I'll move to approve Policy 3255 Student Dress as presented.
Thank you. Having a motion in a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. Moving on to the, an update to Policy 5260 Abused and Neglected Child Reporting. I believe this was previously approved, but we needed to clarify something on this. Okay.
We took out two sentences in that previous policy in regard to
That's right.
For the decision.
Right. Yes, because in the, the looping, it came back that staff was concerned and as were you.
Yes.
So, okay, so yes, those corrections have been made. So we just need to approve the updates to Policy 5260 Abuse and Neglected Child Reporting.
I'll make a motion to approve the updates to Policy 5260 Abuse and Neglected Child Reporting.
Having a motion in a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. Next, we updated Policy 5300, which will be renumbered to 5290 regarding political activity staff participation. This one previously came before the board and we've trustee Bane pointed out that we had a little, we needed a little bit more clarification. So is there any discussion or conversation, comments, whatnot regarding this policy? And trustee Bane, did you read it?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Perfect. Okay. So then if I can get a motion to approve the update to Policy 5300, that will be renumbered to 5290 Political Activity Staff Participation.
So moved.
I'll second that.
Having a motion in a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. Next is an update to Policy 5700 Substitutes. This came back to the board, I believe there was some clarification that needed to be made. I don't remember specifically what it was, though.
So the previously stated classified staff would be paid.
That's right.
We had to clarify that they're paid at an hourly level.
Right.
Furtified substitutes are gonna have to hear from them.
Yes, thank you, Chrissy. And that was, was that brought back from the looping as well? Okay, perfect. All right, so does anyone have any comments or questions on the policy? Okay.
Looks good to me.
All right, so then can I get a motion to approve the update to Policy 5700 Substitutes? Having a motion in a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. Next, we have an annual review of board policy 3295 Hazing, Harassment, Intimidation, Bullying and Cyberbullying. This is a policy required to be reviewed annually and that is what we are doing. Policy committee did review it, there were no changes that were made. So is there any discussion, inputs, comments on this policy? Okay. Then can I get a motion to approve Policy 3295 Hazing, Harassment, Intimidation, Bullying and Cyberbullying?
So I'll move to approve Policy 3295 Hazing, Harassment, Intimidation, Bullying and Cyberbullying as presented.
Thank you. Having a motion in a second, all in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. The next item that's up for action is the renumbering of board policy or the renumbering of Policy 5250. It is going to be renumbered to 4220. The policy is titled Wireless Guest Access to Polis, oh, Wireless Guest Access. So we're renumbering Policy 4250, which is Wireless Guest Access to Policy Number 4220. Don't believe there were any changes or modifications to this policy, it's just simply for renumbering.
I'll make a motion to approve the renumbering of Policy 4250 Wireless Guest Access to a new policy number of 4220.
Having a motion in a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. Next, we are renumbering Policy 3575 Relations with Non-Custodial Parents to Policy Number 3580. That becomes in alignment with ISBA's recommendations. And I don't believe we have done any review of this policy, it's just for renumbering purposes.
I'll make a motion to renumber Policy 575 Relations with Non-Custodial Parents to a new policy number of 3580.
Having a motion in a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. Again, we have renumbering of Policy 4160 Service Animals in Schools. We're renumbering that to Policy Number 2375. Again, the policy hasn't been reviewed or updated, it's simply to renumber the policy and that renumbering is in alignment with ISBA's recommendations.
I will move to remember Policy 4160 Service Animals in Schools to Policy Number 2375 to align with ISBA's recommendations.
I'll second that.
Having a motion in a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. Next, we have an engagement letter with Hayden Ross and Hayden Ross is our auditors. Okay. Okay. Okay, there it is. Did their rate go down? Okay.
You remember from last year to this year?
No. Actually, when I was looking at things, I found the 2016 where we approved it. And they had, did a dramatic increase in their pricing. It was like by $5,000, it was, it was significant and it carried over all five years. And I don't recall if this last year was 20,000 or if it was 22.
20,900 and then 2022, 21,400 and then 2023, this is 21,900.
Right.
I know that trustee CFO Wallace said that if we get approved it for the three years, it's less expensive than doing it year to year.
Yeah.
And they've been very pleased with this auditor.
Okay. Yeah, because I, I recall in, at that meeting trustee Scoobit said. Yeah, 'cause I, I recall, uh, in, at that meeting trustee Scoobitt said, pointed out that, uh, we shouldn't always use the same auditor over and over, we should that it's better to get fresh eyes was his comment.
That's true, it's to always re, go back and reevaluate. Just have new eyes. I know that there's been, there's been some things at city and that county that new eyes, new perspective. Things, things are better reviewed more thoroughly.
Right.
Especially when a new auditor is coming in. I think sometimes there is complacency when an auditor comes in year after year after year and they just know the, know the process and so they kind of trust
Right.
the process rather than looking as, as thoroughly as they could. So I, I agree with that.
Okay. Well, then that being said, we have utilized them for five years. Um, it's my understanding, um, CFO Wallace did state that there, there's not a lot of these companies out there, and so we're kind of at the mercy of the few that there are. But I don't know if if we want to approve this or if we want to, um, see what else is out there or go ahead.
Chrissy, just so we, it's good for this year and then this will be for the next year. So Brian said they're already engaged.
Right.
Hayden Ross, the auditing process starts in just a couple weeks.
Okay.
Um, and they've been working with them throughout the year, they have pretty regular communication.
Okay.
So, so that would mean we, could, could we just approve it for what's going on right now? And it looks like we're approving three years at a time in here?
But if they're already engaged with them for twenty-twenty-one, for June thirty, it ended June thirty, twenty-twenty-one. What was approved previous year? So when I asked Brian about the approval for this, he said, well, we're already in it for this year, so it would have to be for following years, and I wish he was here to speak to us.
It's all good.
Is this something that can be tabled or is this going to be detrimental to, uh, an audit that needs to be filed right away, are we gonna mess up the timeline?
Has it already been approved for this year and this would just be for next year and the following year?
Yeah, there's, there is a timeline, um, that the financials have to be submitted to the state. And, um, and they have already sent out, um, the auditors, the requests from us to start providing things. I would say if you guys are going to seek someone else, I would probably do it after this audit. Because they're already
It's just that they're, when we approve this, it's approving three years. And so we don't really want to approve, at least I don't want to approve three years. I can't speak for everybody, but I'm thinking maybe it might be a good idea to look into some other options, but I certainly don't want to put us in a, in a bad position, that's for sure.
At the very beginning of their letter, it says, we are pleased to confirm our understanding of the services we are to provide. Years ended June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-one through twenty-twenty-three. So they're already under an understanding that this June thirty audit they're providing, we've agreed to.
Okay.
Is what it says. So if we were
Something that's been approved somehow.
Right, and if we're under obligation to have this audit completed, um, we probably should have looked at this letter in April or March.
Yeah, I think we need to, um, I think we need to get trustee, I mean CFO Wallace's input and then get the documentation, because I'm not, I really am not positive how it works. It says we expect to bring our audit on approximately June of each year and to issue our reports in later than October. So I'm not sure if last year, because typically what's happened in prior years is the, um, board chair signs it and the CFO signs it. Board Chair Thompson wanted to bring it to the committee.
Thank you.
And not just sign it, so I am hoping what, that it's only under obligation for this school year and that we can, the board is, can review whether we want, uh, the same from or a different one for the following years. So I, I would recommend that we put it on hold till trustee Wallace gets back next week and then July eighth, we put it on the agenda.
Okay. No, I'm, I'm fine with that, then I can find the other one that got approved.
Yeah, and trustee Wallace
Okay, that would be great. Where are we at? Sorry, I had to go out. Okay. So then do, we need to table? Okay, so can I go, I need a motion to table that? Okay, motion to table the letter of engagement to Hayden Ross?
I'll move to letter, um, of engagement from Hayden Ross.
Until the July eighth meeting.
I'll second.
Having a motion in a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. Moving on to discussion items, the first item for discussion is plant facilities levy. That was presented in the superintendent's report. Would we like to engage in discussion over that, uh, what she presented? Where our perspectives might be for that, et cetera? Yes, please, your slide. I think if you go to, oh wait, no. Okay, so we're being presented with two option and the third being other ideas. With the first option, uh, being to address appropriate facility needs with Esser funds for year one and then run a plant facility levy and replacement instructional levy in twenty-twenty-three of March. Or run, it could be an and, uh, run bond for a new elementary school and direct district facilities needs. So and or, okay, so to do either item one or two. Um, the other option would be to try to pass a plant facility levy this upcoming March in twenty-twenty-two. And then do we have any other ideas with how we would want to proceed with the expiring plant facility levy? I for one don't want to go back to the polls in March twenty-twenty-two. I think until we can stabilize, uh, our trust within the community and, uh, whatnot, I, I don't want to do that. I don't want to set us up to fail.
I agree.
I think we need more information before we can make any, or I need more information before I could even make a decision. Like I was talking about the boundary lines and
Right.
you know, what the, I mean, the dem, uh, demographics of the district have changed so much and you know, as far as construction and all those kinds of things. And then I know Dr. Meyer keeps a pretty good list of, um, with the maintenance of all of the buildings and what they'll be needing and I think we just, I need more, I need the bigger picture of
Okay.
costs and all those kinds of things.
What I would like to see, um, sorry trustee Kristen, I wasn't trying to cut you off.
No, that's fine, I'm, I'm good.
Okay. What I would like to see is with the Esser funds, how much is it? And what are we gonna utilize it for with respect to facilities? And then on top of that, um, kind of, if we're running a plant facility levy, what are we gonna use those dollars for? What do we need them for?
Yep.
And then
The amount.
Yeah.
Yeah, we have that part outlined already.
Okay.
So, and again, just to give a rough estimate, we can bring, we'll bring this stuff to you. To give you a rough estimate, the plant facility levy has been one point one four six million every year for the last five years.
Okay.
So it was part, it was passed in March of twenty-seventeen and we have had one point one four six. So buses are on that, some technology has been on that, facility needs has been on that. Some roofing's been on that. Up deferred maintenance has been left off, so I can bring you a copy of everything that we've done. We have a copy, we have a spreadsheet of everything that it's paid for.
Okay.
And then, um, there are some things, some things that are one and done are ongoing every year if we're able to keep up, and that includes the flooring cycles, the HVAC cycles of upgrading, the roof cycles, paint cycles, all the different cycles that we have that I've shared with the board, but it's overwhelming to look at it.
Right.
Piecing it out into what we've done each year might be a better way, at least one different way to look at it.
That would be good.
I'd like to see that, a comparison of what has been done year to year and the intent for future year to year.
Yep.
And I'd also like to know what we didn't accomplish. And then the replacement instructional levy, that would be replacing what we just passed this last year, correct? Okay. Which what can I have an idea of what we had on that? But I wouldn't, I would want to know if our intent would be to increase the instructional levy? I guess my struggle is I know with the boundary line adjustment, we will be losing income until that property is developed. So the impact that it's gonna have on us on top of going after more money, I'd like to see how the pieces fit together. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
We're not losing any money. Right, yeah, we, the money stays the same.
Oh, that's right, he did say that.
And the money stays the same.
Yeah, that's right. He did. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
No, we're less people, so then it increases the burden on the
On the, that's right, so the, the dollars are the same, that's right.
But what I do think that we need is an independent inspection of the buildings, which I know is probably, um, I don't know how much they run, I doubt it's gonna be inexpensive, but I think if we're gonna do this, we need a full picture of what the district in totality looks like. But I appreciate we have the spreadsheet and we've been
That's a good idea.
All that
That's required by statute.
Yeah. We, we need independent inspection so that we have an idea of what, so you look at the whole ball wax, you know, the whole big picture.
Right, one, it's required and two,
Right.
how can we make decisions if we don't have that information in front of us?
Right.
Well, we have it, it's just that we've done an internal leak. Um, we have BCEF, which is the state forms, the building condition evaluation forms, our state forms. And Ryan and Mike, and they've had some outside people come in when they first did it five years ago, they've done it and then they've done it again, but I think what trustee Kristen's saying is is you'd like me to look for how much would be for an independent external contractor to come in and do those inspections. Is what I think I hear you saying.
Yeah.
So I'll find out the amount that would be.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate that.
And then, uh, the option of running a bond for a new elementary school and district facilities, do we have an idea of what we're looking at for that? Cost-wise, I mean
I'm not prepared to give you that.
Okay.
I'm, I'm really this, I knew, I, I wasn't expecting any sort of, this is why it's in discussions.
Oh, yeah, yeah, no, I, yeah.
But I, if, if the, if the board was leaning towards, the majority of the board was leaning, leaning towards option B, run the plant facility levy in March of twenty-twenty-two, that would be something that I would have to get, like we would need to get a committee patron, we need to get on it right away as far as explaining all of the stuff that was needed, so if we're going to wait a year, then I could give you more specific data, specifically like the census. That's gonna be, and that is gonna be coming, we know, in November is what member Karen Shabara said. We can get all of the stuff that you guys have requested and continue to get that sort of information to you so that you could look at it at all. I just kept, I keep putting this on every month or every meeting because I don't, what I don't want is for us all of a sudden in August to say, yeah, we decided, and I, I don't feel like
And we'll wait till October.
Yeah.
We just wanna have our ducks in a row if we need to.
Yeah, I did, well, I'm just really nervous about the only forty-two votes, so I didn't want to spring this on the voters.
Right.
If we did decide that you, the board was in favor of running in March of twenty-twenty-two, we have got to do a lot of awareness campaigning and I would want the board to be there for question and answers, talk about those forums that were the boards there and answers questions for the public. I mean, I think we'd have to do a really big focus on that if we decided, if the board decided to do that this coming March.
I don't think I would like to do that in twenty-twenty-two.
No. That's too soon.
Randy, do you have information? So I think from the four of us, I know, uh, trustee Irons isn't here, but from the four of us, we, we wouldn't want you to run something March twenty-twenty-two.
Good, so then I feel like we could get enough information together to answer your questions.
Okay.
And bring more in, uh, Mr. Wallace will be able to help me
Yeah.
to come with that because he can answer the financial questions better than I can.
Okay.
But also, it specifically when bonds are coming up and his fear about that happening without us replacing them.
Right.
He feels really strongly about that. Um, and so I, I would like him to be here for that. And also he and, um, Mr. Ferriola could be here to, to address, okay, this is what's happened every year for the last five years with one point one four six, it's all in a spreadsheet. This is what our plan is for moving forward. And I think that would be a great piece for you guys to be involved in all that and say, um, okay.
With Right, with respect to that, what I'd like to see, um, similar to what, uh,
Curriculum workshop in the presentation workshop.
Yeah, I would, uh, let's all sit down at the table and talk, not just give us a presentation and have us try and figure out what questions we want to ask.
So that is exactly what we were thinking, 'cause it worked so well when Dr. Pazley and Ms. Sexton did it.
Yes.
If we, you can't just sit down and start talking until we give you the information.
Right.
If I get information together, then we do a short presentation, just giving you the information ahead of time and then do a presentation, go through it, then sit down like they did at that and then we all sit down here and then the workshop discussion back and forth, questions can happen.
That would be great.
Yeah, it seemed to work really well last time.
It did.
Okay, everyone good with that?
I'm
Yes.
Great with that, yeah.
So I guess I would just ask, if there's any other things that you think about in the next week or so that we could get together, um, that would be great, if you just send me a quick email like, hey, uh, this would be helpful to have this as well, so we could put it together. That would be great.
Did you note down the, basically with the Esser funds, I just want to know what we're spending it on?
And just as a general, big picture, remember it was the, you know, he feels as though the initial for the Esser three was gonna be five point, almost five point three million. Which twenty percent of it has to be spent on learning loss.
Right.
So if these are one point one four six, I haven't got, I haven't gone to the level of detail saying, oh, we can pay for this, 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 and this. But I've been looking at the, again, the big picture, if we have this money and we have, are replacing this money, I don't want the taxpayers to know we're being conscientious with the fact that, that we are getting this money from the federal government. How can we, and my words are bridge, uh, so that they realize that the bridge is a temporary, it's not a permanent funding source because I think it's really important the public understands that we do have facility needs every year.
Right.
And I'll show the board what we've spent them on, but then the public needs to be aware. We want to bridge and help out, but we also do, don't want to get into deferred maintenance where roofs are falling in
Right.
things aren't being done.
Right, that's just one-time funds for one-time project.
Exactly, yeah. So that's why I'm saying address these, with the, it's like bridging it, um, for a year. Anyway, I don't think Mr. Wallace is as much in favor as I am because his brain is more aligned with lines of once, and he, I'll let him tell you, but he was very adamant for me to say to the board, once you put those funds in place and the public doesn't really hear that these are one-time funds.
Right.
And we're just bridging this so that we don't ask for additional money right now, because we're trying to climate and culture. He's, he's like, once that happens, you, and he's been in a lot of districts, he says it's really hard to get that back, so that's something he'll bring up with you guys.
Okay, and I mean, if, within the concept of where the Esser dollar's going, it would be nice to know that their focus is on the one and done.
Yeah.
Not saying they're not gonna be bridging, but if we do it here with this money, then we don't have to do it here with that money.
Absolutely.
So, that would be
It would have been nice, um, it would have been nice if we would have known ahead of time because reportable would have been the perfect way for that one-time thing to do it, but it, it was already done and you already proved it with the other funds, he couldn't do that.
Okay.
But that would have been a perfect example of what you're talking about.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
They, um, on the State Department of Education's website, they have really good documentation on all the Esser funds, one, two, and three. And they're extremely specific on what you have to meet. And they're extremely specific on what you have to meet in order to actually spend the funds.
Right.
So if anybody's interested in that, they can find that there. And I agree, I think part of what the community was upset about with like the COVID money, they understood it was one-time money, but what they didn't have was they didn't, it wasn't easily available to them to see, here was the amount, and then here's how it was spent.
Yeah.
You know.
I think he did a good job when Trusty Wallace, we don't know the SR three, because he wasn't even willing to budget that into anywhere, because it was still TBD, like we didn't know for sure the allocation.
Right.
And it wasn't even in the GRA yet to be drawn down, so he was like, I'm not putting that in the budget, because he was being, you know, conservative, because we've seen so many holdbacks this last couple of years, that he wasn't. But I think he's done a good job of that SR one, and that those slides were where we needed that and showed the spreadsheet, this is where we have spent so far. We could certainly share that farther out with the public, because it's only been at a board meeting. I'm not sure exactly how that will look, but for sure of the website and for sure, maybe saying, check this out, and when we go out to do awareness of like, hey, if the board does vote to put this on the plant facility on pause for a year, I think that's going to take some real aware, like even board members doing like the, the community, the meetings, and having board members be there like we did before, explaining that and having those slides for the publics to be able to come and ask questions about, I think that would be helpful when the board's there.
Yeah, that would be great. Okay, moving on on the discussion items, we're on the student activity funds.
I feel like this is a crazy long meeting.
Yeah. One question I do have, I didn't ask it on the last one, we have zero accounts, and then we have, like, like we have track, and then we have with the zero monies, and then we have L track with monies. Do we know what that means? No.
Let me look real quick.
Yeah, it's really tiny.
It's student activities.
Yeah, because like volleyball has zero, and then there's L volleyball, I'm on, that's on John Brown, so you have to scroll down to page 20. If you, if you go down to the corner, it should tell you what page you're on. Or maybe not. Then Timberlake Junior High is next. And then Lakeland. There you go. And then page 20 is, there's volleyball.
So these are all our separate accounts, so it depends on what they come out of.
Well, I would just, I'm curious why there is an account volleyball with the zero dollars, but then there's an L volleyball with monies.
Oh, I just know I have access to my L account, so.
Okay.
I mean, now I have another account.
Well, there's, you don't, there's zero money in it. Are they all zero?
No, wrestling has a dollar amount, but then there's an L wrestling. Well, there's a wrestling, an L wrestling, and then an L district wrestling. So, yeah, I would like some clarification on, on, on these accounts. And, and, and just maybe, I guess, a little bit of instruction about how it works.
Yeah.
That would be real beneficial.
We'll put that on the July.
Perfect, and honestly, if the July 8th meeting is, is ever growing, like this one did, I'm, I'm not opposed to bumping it to either the, well, we try not to do a second meeting in July, but maybe the first August meeting.
Sorry, excuse me.
Okay.
No, 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 I, I was just going like this, and then I had, it was not on purpose. I'm so tired, and I was so good, but I'm pushing through, we're going to do this.
Okay.
It was a total accident, did not mean to do that.
It's all good. It's all good. The next item up for discussion is the fraud risk inquiry. Apparently this was completed last year by the chair. Because of some of the questions, it does state in the header, Board Chair, I, I felt that the board needed to provide input, because I don't know everyone's perspective. But I just kind of wanted to go over the questions, since we do have to do this in public before I sign it. Get your input, so I can make some whatevers on here notes to sign it and then get it submitted. The first question that's asked is, has the board considered the possibility fraud may occur at the district? And what are our views about the risk of fraud? I mean, honestly, I think I should just keep this to Randy to fill out.
I would say we should consider the possibility of fraud.
Right, I mean, it could happen, it could happen anywhere.
Right.
Yeah, always, always consider the possibility.
And I have no idea what the risk of fraud is, because I have no prior knowledge regarding the district and any of those things. I have read through the prior audits, but they're a little different than what I'm used to seeing.
Well, you know, my, my view of the risk of fraud is that once that, that wormhole gets opened, if you don't get it plugged up, it creates a mess. So I, I don't like having outlets where there can be that risk created. Which is, I mean, partly the accountability on the student accounts. I mean, we're supposed to know about them, we don't know anything about them, and there was something stated tonight that, you know, could, could mean that things have been going not as they should, but we don't know about it, so how do you fix it?
Well, the first step is awareness, and you, you, we're putting them on this, that's good.
Yeah.
And then having people come and talk about it, whether it's Brian, or whether it's the Treasurers at the schools, the two goalkeepers, where there's the high school sports, particularly in the league, is where the biggest budgets are, and that's all, those high school sports are on the levy, so that is, I think it's, would be good to have that information here for you.
That'd be great.
Yeah, for sure.
So awareness of fraud is key to minimizing its. Thank you. Do we have knowledge of any actual suspected or alleged fraud affecting the district, including grant programs?
Oh, there was alleged tonight. But I don't, I don't know.
Yeah. I don't, I don't, honestly, in all fairness, I don't know how many grant programs we have running in our district. I don't know who's getting grant monies, and I, and I don't know that that's, I would think we would, I don't know if informed of that. Because the budget doesn't specific, the budget presentations don't specifically address grant funding. I do know the overall whole budget picture, there are a few things that I do know we apply for that go into the budget, but like the STEM, she obtained grant funding for that, which is phenomenal, but that's not something we would know unless we had that presentation and we were told, so.
And this is part of what our chair does, she keeps very close track of all grants received and expended, and the paperwork required by each entity that the grant is given through or from. So that's all with this question.
Okay. So on its face value, though, do any of us have any knowledge of actual suspected or alleged fraud?
No, there's, we would never have any knowledge of that, just like Christie was saying, that's why the statute says that the treasurer is supposed to be giving us a report every month at the meeting. Because there's absolutely no way, remember, Brian told us, CFO Wallace told us that every school is allotted a certain amount of money, and they spend their money, and then, you know, we only ever see the big bubble, the very high, high levels, that there's no way for us to know or have control or any of that.
I agree.
Not necessarily the control, but at least know that there's.
As I'm saying, that's, that's not our.
Right, another set of eyeballs on it.
So this is outside of our purview?
Not these, not his question.
Okay, okay.
No, I'm just saying, we, Trusty Grissom made the comment that we wouldn't have control over that. And over those dollars.
Okay.
No, but we have, we do have the responsibilities.
Right.
To believe that our administration and staff is using the utmost care with our dollars. And the treasurer, the treasurer goes and does, because of COVID, it didn't happen this year, but typically she goes into the Peach Building and does an internal audit of that, and does an audit, I thought, and just do at the district level, and pull specific and checks, cross-checks things. She started that.
Does she prepare a report to, that she could provide to us with her monthly?
Absolutely, I could ask her to do that, and she just started that this last five years, she hadn't done it for, she'd done it in the very beginning, that she hadn't done it for a lot of years, and then I asked if she can do it again, just because we were in the red, and I thought that would be important, and so she did start that again, but on COVID, it was put on pause, so I could write that down.
Perfect. So we don't have any knowledge of this due to the treasurer's involvement, but the board doesn't have control over the money. We have the trust of the administration to be fiscally responsible. Is that correct? Okay. For the grant awards received, do you have knowledge of any possible or actual non-compliance or abuses of the grant programs occurring during the period being audited or the subsequent period? No. Do you have any input? Okay. Is the board involved in the district's processes for identifying and responding to fraud risks? How does the board exercise such oversight activities? Common examples of oversight include reviewing approving checks, reviewing bank statements and reconciliations, and reviewing approving the monthly, quarterly financial reports from the treasurer.
I've never seen any of that.
We would have to say no, because we are not getting those
Right.
monthly and quarterly financial reports from the treasurer. Yes, CFO Wallace is bringing those to us, but we are not getting them. And we're not reviewing bank statements and reconciliations.
And then the final question is, is the district in compliance with laws, regulations, contracts, and grant agreements?
I don't know how we would know that. I guess we're just kind of deferring to the administration, assuming that they are doing that.
Right, I would assume that we are in compliance based on the administration, but it's not like we're given.
I don't have firsthand knowledge of that.
Okay.
Would it be all right if I utilize the facilities?
Yes, you may. Okay. Thank you. Okay. Thank you all for that. I'll wait for Trusty Major to return. Oh, the first board meeting in July. That's a discussion item.
We were making sure that this is going to be closed for re-carpeting.
Oh, okay, yeah.
Project, we have secured John Brown Elementary Library, if that's okay.
Okay.
It's right there, so it's in the same spot, we could certainly go somewhere else if you want.
Okay.
But maybe it's an opportunity to go up to Apple. Like there's a, I'm just going to check that some projects. For the July meeting, but we typically only have one, at least ever since I've been here, we only have one July meeting.
Okay.
It's like, people take a little bit of the.
Break too.
Break, yeah, maybe one July meeting, so we were just asking the board if you want to do the first meeting, you want to do it somewhere else, or you want to cancel the first. I feel really nervous about canceling the first meeting, because there's some timely things that you and I talked about. So I would rather, if you're, if you're going to have one meeting, I would prefer we have the first one, just because some stuff is real timely for us.
Okay, I don't mind holding the first meeting.
I'll be asking to be excused from that meeting.
Again, did you? Okie dokie. Excuse me.
Will you be here?
Okay.
Eight?
Yes.
This is our regular meeting day.
It is our regular meeting, yeah.
I'll be here.
Okay, perfect. So then, I don't have any problem moving it over to John Brown, do you? They're re-carpeting the district office, so we need to bump. Okay, so, yeah.
Maybe just a friendly reminder, so I don't show up here first.
That would be a good note on the door. Debbie. Go next door.
Walk next door.
All right, the next item on the agenda for discussion is the AG welding course proposal. I'm a little confused about this, because what we've received is just all the standards. There's nothing specific to the course. The same with the AG mechanics course proposal? Okay.
We actually have the proposal, I'm sorry, I didn't look at the. Like, so we have this off to July 3rd, or 8th, that you have a proposal.
Okay. That would be great. Oh, not a worry, no, I, I appreciate seeing the standards, I just, I don't know anything about the course. Yeah.
So we can put those on.
Okay, and the horticulture one, the only thing that wasn't articulated on here is what curriculum would be, would be being used. I appreciate the layout. Okay, okay.
There is no textbook required
Okay, then what is the, what are we utilizing to? Yeah, to identify proper laboratory safety and classroom management, identifying defined parts of a plant, cells, anatomy, I mean, I, I would assume something's being used.
It's not a textbook, I guess.
Okay.
However, there are some, when we get a little bit further down into the agenda, we have the secondary supplemental resources list.
Okay.
And there, there could be, and I can follow up with her as far as what she is using, and she's not using a textbook. She's brand new.
Okay.
So I don't know if she's thinking we already have a textbook.
Okay.
But she didn't indicate a particular need for a textbook.
Okay, I mean, I. Okay, I mean, I would, I would assume she's using resources, but we still would need to approve those, yeah. Okay.
I don't know if you would be willing tonight to approve the course proposal with the standards and the units and those things. Similar to what you did with the five that came from Lakeland High School where Chef Trustee Chris asked.
Right.
For the ability to look at the materials.
Unfortunately, these are only under discussion, so, okay, we can revisit this and approve in July if that's adequate.
Follow up with the instructor.
Okay.
To make, to verify if I don't have any supplemental resources from them, what should we be using?
Okay. And then, we have a plethora of information under the elementary supplemental curriculum materials.
Can I ask one quick, or one, just make one recommendation?
Yeah.
On this new format for, or on this format for course proposals, could we get the school that it's going to? Like, at the top with the class description, rather than buried in the, your parents and guardians at the bottom, buried inside? There's nothing that indicates that this would be at.
Yes, we can definitely do that, however, once the board approves a course, it's, it's in the course. Catalogue in Skyward for any school to use. So, okay, so if you approve it, Lakeland High School could use it.
Okay, okay.
Then I can certainly.
No, that's, that's fine, that, that's just fine.
Except in my, I guess. Seconding what Randy's, trustee Baines proposing, it would be nice to know where this course is originally starting. So, yeah, if we can just add that, that'd be great.
These are all similar high school courses.
Okay, okay. And I might like to add that it's great to see these types of courses being brought back. I think it's great.
Well, and these are, these are kind of unique, because we have an opening in the industrial mechanics shop. And then Christine Sandall is retiring, and she. Did all the horticulture with Greenhouse, and so they were worried about what was gonna happen to Greenhouse. And they happened to find somebody who has a degree in ag science, who also is certified in welding, so it's a nice.
Win-win.
I know, between the ag world and the shop world, so.
That's cool.
And, yeah, and it's a woman.
That's really cool.
That's awesome.
So, with regard to the supplemental requests for elementary and for secondary. Just kind of a reminder, I guess, for the board, when we talked at the board workshop regarding curriculum, we, we acknowledged that. We, we needed to kind of get caught up, and so this is a lengthy list. Several of the, the websites that are listed actually are there because of our school closure last spring, and teachers having to kind of scramble to find. Tools that they could use to engage kids at home, and then found a lot of success, and would like to continue to use them. So I don't anticipate that each June, we're going to come with this long of a list, but this is kind of our catch-up opportunity, because we hadn't been bringing these kinds of supplemental things to the board prior.
We also wanted to honor, I think it was your request, to take all those links from the teaching and learning handbook. Not everything on the teaching and learning handbook is specific to curriculum, some of it is, it's an instructional tool for a teacher, it's a rubric that a teacher could utilize, so we didn't put those in there, because it's not really something that we go in front of kids. But anything that was new, we really tried to capture that, so that you have, so in the doc that you have for elementary and secondary, there's just three little tabs, so there's a secondary and elementary, and then the teaching and learning handbook. You'll see that there's definitely some overlapping. We tried to list it by school, so you kind of knew which school it was being associated with, but a lot of these are gonna be universal between multiple grade levels, so. Some of them are grade-specific, but most of them are pretty universal. And then we included Reach Academy as well, so. Our goal is to just, if you would like a different format, or there's a different way that we could, you know, showcase this. Then we definitely can take some feedback and make some changes.
And then trustee Chris, I know you weren't able to be here when we did the personal workshop, but one of the things we did discuss was that, following the board workshop and the presentation of the. Supplemental resources that we are asking for your approval to use, that we would then send out via Skylark to our parents with a link to these documents, so they can go in and get the things that we're presenting. And then also, we can put them on the district website and our Facebook page for community members to see.
Yep.
So that we, and then we would encourage them, if they, if they look at some things and they have questions or concerns, that they could either reach out to their board member, or they can reach out to the board through whatever is convenient for them. So unless there's something new. Different you and brothers do, that's kind of the next step for us.
Yeah, I'm fine with that, as long as we're giving, or at least giving the community the ability for the input, you know, whether they take advantage of that or not, we're providing the access. Which we sort of have to do by law anyways. Do we have a copy of that book, The Kite Runner?
Yes, it's.
Is it back there? Okay, I will be taking that, because that's actually a very controversial book. Yeah. But I want to go through it and make sure that what I'm remembering is actually in the book.
Not. All of these things have links. Is that because they're like a workbook, or like word ladders, math antics, poppy by Abi?
Is it not working?
No.
Okay, I'll fix them.
Okay. Yeah, there's a lot that are, but then I was like, wait a minute.
The glue are in the black.
Well, actually, under JB, the black are, yeah, that's why I was like, wait a minute. We've got to teach this whole dog in a drink.
So if there are some, I'll go through it, if they aren't linked, I'll link them in. In my doc, it linked it, so I'm not sure.
Okay.
So like Class Kick, for example, I don't know that that's a link, because it's more of a platform, and so there isn't really a link attached to it. So it's a way that teachers can upload some of the materials, it's access for parents. There are some worksheets that you can kind of pull from it, but it's more of a, a platform for, you know. Communication back and forth, and then parents can see those docs, a different kind of platform than Google Classroom. Our primary teachers tend to use it, it's a little bit more primary and user-friendly in that standpoint, but I still wanted to put it on there so you, because it would be going in front of kids, and it's a tool they utilize.
And you said that's Class Kick? Okay.
So, I'm pretty sure Ben Kiefer uses it, Twin uses it, does John Brown use it? They use Seesaw, right? So. We even asked our counselors, like, if there were books that they were using, and we linked those in for you, so we tried to be as comprehensive as we could.
No, thank you.
So our, I know there's a lot of information in there, our intent is to, on July 8th. Have this again as a discussion item, which gives you a couple of weeks to kind of dig in and take a look at it, and then if there are any questions. Or follow-up that you want us to do, we would take that at the next board meeting.
Okay.
With an, with a, then an action item at the following board meeting, for you to kind of go through and tell us which ones you're approving and which ones you're not.
Okay.
Is it gonna be July, if it's August 11th?
I don't think any of these require. We have a couple of novels that are on there, but Amazon's pretty quick. I don't, there are no textbooks or. So, and the novels are not necessarily, they're not being used in the first person, so I think we're okay. Most of them are websites. There were two on the secondary, there are two, there's a government piece. That Mr. Haynes and Mr. Keating from Lakeland High School would like to use it, actually, it's just a supplement to the textbook we already have. So it's not new, it's just a, a new resource, it has some assessments. That one they would probably want, we just want to make sure that they have, and again, it's not a new adoption, it's just a piece that goes with the current adoption. And then there was one from Shelley Asher, who teaches French at Lakeland High School, and she is requesting the ability to purchase. Oh, you may have. You may have PDFed in here.
That's the only way I can.
So, that's why I didn't know, I added them after, and I didn't realize that, so that's my fault. So I'll have to bring those to the board.
I think there's a movie also, I think I ended up watching the movie after hearing about the book.
But if you go down a little further, you'll see it's not so friendly there. They're like, why is this approved for high school use? And, yeah, in the reviews. Okay, that's just, so she says it, I just saw it.
I tried to link, at least take you to.
Thank you, that's great, you did good.
It's a lot of work going on.
Once we're hot, it'll be great.
Right.
Move forward in a nice, easy pace, but, yeah, right now, it's a little bit like breaking out of a fire.
It is, we appreciate the work.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
So while I'm up here, and then I said we get the next item on the agenda for discussion, but you did approve those FFA courses. And there were no textbooks that were identified for us, and then, but there are textbooks that they. Are using, and so I have a copy of the textbooks, and that I am requesting that the board take a look at, and that we can talk about approving for the user next year.
Okay. Oh, yeah, your math curriculum is before the FFA textbooks. No, 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 that's fine, because I'm like, wait a minute, we're going into first reads.
Is it okay from the supplemental request, just to have it linked to the bottom, you have secondary, elementary, and then the next time, there won't be the teaching and learning, because we'll just funnel it through elementary, secondary, and then. If we decide to don't teach and learn, and it'll all, it'll go through one of those two lengths, does that work for you?
Okay, I'm not following what you've just asked.
So right now, we have it separate, we have it secondary, elementary, and then we add the tab that says teaching and learning handbook.
Right.
Moving forward, we'll probably just funnel it through, here's the secondary, here's an elementary, does that format work for you guys? Do you want it differently?
Understanding where the supplemental requests for the supplemental resources are, whether they're elementary or secondary. Yes, I personally want to know, where's this going, high school, junior high, or elementary?
For school-specific, is there any other additional information that would be helpful?
Not that I can, not that I can see at the moment. The resources within the teaching and learning handbook that you provided on its supplemental page, what I hear you saying is that's in the handbook, and that can be utilized throughout the entire district. And so you've given us three components, you've given us the elementary specific, the secondary specific, and then universal. I think from this point forward, it would be beneficial just to know, these are the resources for secondary, these are the resources for primary.
And then what's approved by the board, if they're a digital resource, we would link them into the teaching and learning handbook.
Correct, I would expect that. Right, yeah, so teachers have a, have their resource, which is the teaching and learning handbook, instead of trying to find a spreadsheet that the board approved. Yeah, okay, definitely.
Just from a systems approach?
Yeah. Yeah, I don't have a problem with that. Does anybody else see it? Okay, Ramona?
I have to look at everything, and I don't have enough information to give an answer. I, you know me, the more data you give me, the happier I am.
I think from this point moving forward is just what she's talking about.
I don't even see that, that you're looking at right there.
If you go to.
Where you're grabbing that, I didn't see it in the beginning.
It's actually. Under I8, it's the second hyperlink PDF supplemental requests, teaching and learning handbook links.
Oh, underneath the elementary.
Underneath the elementary, correct.
I don't have that, look.
Oh, it did get added five minutes before the board meeting, so you might need to refresh.
I, I will say, the board meeting is on a different time zone.
I'm just telling you what it says.
Yeah, you're right. When I uploaded, there were different tabs, so I didn't realize I haven't got all the tabs.
Oh, gotcha, yeah, well.
So let's try this again, oh, yep, there it is.
Fair mistake. Okay, so, yeah, how you do. And so I, I don't have any objection to then just presenting the supplemental material as this is primary or this is secondary. I don't think we have to review the teaching and learning handbook links again, because that's where we're going from here.
There won't be anything that goes on it.
Okay, perfect. Okay, so we're on I10. There you go.
These extra lines really aren't there, it's just because it's condensed, it really, it does look nice.
It looks cleaner.
Yeah, just so you know, it doesn't look like that.
I believe you.
So as we prepare to move forward with the math adoption. One of the things that the board has been very clear about is that we want to make sure we have patron participation, and not just parent participation, but.
Right.
Community members, and so Dr. Pasley. Kind of put together this application that we would actually mail out to patrons across the district.
Okay.
So that they have, everybody has an opportunity to say, hey, I would like to participate in that. So this is at the draft.
Okay.
And if you have input, as far as anything you feel would be pertinent that we didn't ask, or how did that happen?
Do any of the surrounding districts have something similar than this? I know Coralene's pretty organized with their committees. My only question is, is. What is the thought behind asking? How many students they have, what grades they're in, and what schools they attended?
I think it's just getting some demographic information. I actually met with the curriculum director in San Point, and I met with the assistant suit in Coralene, and the assistant suit of Paul's, just to get a sense of this, because this is the first time I've done. Or I will participate in the math adoption from a district level, so just trying to get some insight, just your perspective, and so several of these questions is just getting a sense of who the people are. We're investing in them, they're gonna be investing in us, so it felt like it just said, even if you want to participate, just kind of felt a little bit. You know, sterile, I guess, and so this was really for us, really, to just get a sense of who they are. If they have kids, if they've had past kids, they can talk about that, so it feels more like a community coming together to make this really good decision. That was all three of their feedback when I asked them.
Okay, okay.
I would also add that, you know, if we had 100 people send an application, and we can't have a committee of 100 people, it's almost a judgment decision.
You never know.
But if it is our intent to have community members who don't have ties to our schools, the only way to know that is to ask that question. So it does give us the.
Good, right.
The opportunity to get a good representation of the constituent district.
So.
It's important we have a little bit of everything, you know, from, we don't have just intermediate parents, we have some primary parents, we have people that maybe have grandparents, or maybe they're just community members, but, you know, we don't want it to just be one section, one at all, so. This allows us to get some more demographic information.
So what is the criteria? Is this following? The criteria for the other curriculum committees, the policy that we just approved, or like, how are we going to pick these people there? And I don't, like, is we're gonna have, you know, two parents at every level, one parent, are we gonna have a business member, are we gonna have admin, you know, teach, I mean, how are we going to? Choose who's on this committee and in what ratio, and, I mean.
And our policy doesn't dictate that, it just says that we have to have the community committee, so Dr. Pasley and I can sit. So Dr. Pasley and I can sit down and talk with Dr. Meyer and we can kind of come up with a draft as far as how many people would be manageable. And that's, if the team's too big, it really does get hard to make a decision. And then once we know how many would be manageable, you know, how many community members, how many elementary parents, middle level parents, high school parents. I guess it's just kid math adoptions, which is the elementary and middle.
Mm-hmm.
And we could bring that to you.
Yeah.
I envision, I mean, some of the students have been on the interest in how many people, because it is a long committee. We're asking that monthly, we're meeting with them. So I think that we will meet. And then once we have that, we're bringing it to the board, whichever committee person from the board wants to participate to be on that committee. And then we're kind of deciding what that criteria would be. So some of it will be based on how much interest we have. I mean, I know we don't want it to be lopsided in one sense, but if we, you know, if we only have ten people, then we only have two people. So some of that criteria, like, we can't make it until we have a better sense of interest. It would be a great problem to have too many people.
It would be phenomenal.
That's our hope.
Okay.
Then on the second page, we just, there's a way, do you have any questions?
Well, I just, I think it's the perspective of the committee, like, is this a district committee or a board committee? Because what I'm hearing is this is a district committee. And, and I'm sorry if, you know, I'm always when bringing this up, but the curriculum committee belongs to the board. And it's a, it's a committee of the board. And I appreciate all this work. I just want to make sure that that's the understanding.
Right here, I understand that this is an advisory committee to the Board of Trustees of the Lincoln Joint Explosion. Time commitment.
Right.
Telling additional work by request by the trustees in order to identify. But the purpose of it, and certainly a trustee or two could sit on the committee. But the purpose is that the professionals, they get the advisory committee and then they report. I've asked that they report monthly back to the board the work that the committee is doing next year. So it's not to the very end, it's not very trimming. But they've done a timeline. We've updated the timeline. And the timeline, they will come every month and do a short report for the board.
And then on.
Is what the intention is. Does that meet what you're thinking?
Lisa, if you could scroll the page to the very first paragraph is very specific. Stating that the board is forming this committee.
So where.
Yeah, I read through that.
Okay.
We're kind of doing the light work here for you.
Yeah, I appreciate that.
So really, and that's why.
Very much so.
It's a discussion item for you tonight to be able to kind of pick it apart and offer suggestions for improvement. And then we'll bring it back for approval at the next board meeting. And I would anticipate, because it is a committee of the board, that that would be what we would do with each piece of this. And so we would just direct this as first.
Well, we think we would have, we would be in conjunction with you about the committee selection. I don't think it would be, you guys pick it and let us know. So that being said, I mean, I appreciate the application. And then I would assume when people come in, or when people apply, sorry. I mean, we're just kept in the loop with how we're advancing. And then, you know, you come back with, we've gotten five people or we've gotten forty people. Here's their applications. We need to review these and we need to make a committee selection.
And would you anticipate that that would be in a regular, we would do that in a regular board meeting? Or would we have a special meeting if, to do that work?
I don't know if we're required to do an committee selection in a public board meeting. I would think it could be done in a workshop.
That's what I was wondering.
Wouldn't you say so?
Yeah, we don't have to legally do the selection of the committee.
Recommend not to do that. There's a lot of discussion, from my experience doing this, that cannot, that would be very detrimental, I think, to the community, to the community to have those discussions.
Would it be, because we have to, I was just going to ask, would it be appropriate even just to whoever from the board is going to serve on the committee, they participated with Dr. Pasley to be able to make those decisions rather than the full board? So if there's one or two, then when we have those applications come in, depending on interest, we have to create a criteria. Then if it's two, then it's four of us just really sitting down, two board members and two of us with Dr. Meyer, just going through that. And if we have to create that criteria and we define it, and then, you know, go through that, does that work?
Yeah, I don't have any problem with that at all. Okay.
I think on our time, our plan is to mail this application out in July after.
Yes, till August fourteenth.
After board approval, so.
It's going to have to be in perfect timing. I didn't realize that the board needed to approve the application. I was thinking it would just give you feedback. We're thinking it's going to be a tight, a very tight timeline if you have to take it back for approval for the application. For us to get it printed and get it to every patron.
Notice and they can download it.
Well, the committee application process is in September. The committee's first meeting is in October. July, the math adoption is announced on the website. We don't have.
I think that's what we were thinking that we were going to.
Is in July.
Send out the.
Okay.
The application.
Okay.
But unless you have a great deal of feedback for us to go back and make major modifications, we would just bring this back to the July eight board meeting to ask the board to enter, including it, so that we can sort it out. Because I feel like you changed this. You changed it to July. It's not so, we don't have a latest version. It says the student adoption process, I thought we moved that to here.
Yeah.
Did you just add a couple?
Yeah, you're right. If you don't start, that you won't have a recommendation from March to the board, and then the board will need time to review that. And then to be able to get it through the budget, define the budget process and the board approve that and to get it.
Just, oh, go ahead. Sorry.
We can establish criteria out there.
The reason I put it on discussion is that I didn't think we'd make board to approve the application. I thought it would be the feedback from you that is in the board and then the criteria piece. I think your board definitely should weigh in on the criteria piece. And then one or two board members, because you represent, trustee recently, was the board representative, I V P. Then there's going to be curriculum committee, half the house, and then there's going to be other committees, so you have a budget. There's different ones that each board member could be on. But there's some committee in the board where one or two board members, but it doesn't create a forum. And the board needs to get input and come back to the board. And then it's, it feels like that's really, it takes a lot more input into the process and that.
Okay. I am a little bothered by a few questions, just so you know. Okay. And number one, I love. Number two, I just want to know the reasons. I don't think we need to specify primary reasons. Because if we're sending this out to all the community, I don't want to exclude anyone because we're targeting, which I know we're not, but I don't want that perception. Number three, you could simply state, what would you bring to the committee for possible mathematics instructional materials? Take out all the identifiers that you're trying to target, because some people may not. I mean, like, maybe some guy's retired. I don't know, but some guy that's used math his whole career, but he doesn't have a degree. And he really. Well, they don't have degrees. No, they don't. Okay, so retired Boeing engineer. But he's got a lot that he wants to offer, but, you know, he may not be able to articulate that. And I don't want him to not apply because we're trying to be funneling. Perfect. Just give it one word. Yeah. Yeah, that would be perfect. Number four, what teams have you been a member of that you consider effective and successful? I'm not really sure what we're trying to pull out from the person, other than, you know, are you a roadblock or are you flowing through the river? I mean, I get that. Do you know how to work with people? No. You could just take out. Run, that word's not necessary. I would like it to be gone. Yeah. And then I think a community advisory committee should. I don't know if I like it. I'm just curious if we want to keep it on there. Or, I mean, maybe it's something about, you know, I don't know. I just, my, again, my concern is alienating with language. So I don't, I just want anyone who thinks that they've got something to contribute to apply. Because I think that's valuable for our community. Right. Okay, except we're titling this the Materials Curricular Review Committee. So with respect to that, I'd like universal language. So either change that to match that or change the one at the top to match that, so that they understand you're joining this. What do you want it to be?
Right.
Okay. Oh, does it? Okay, so maybe just simply change the top. Yeah. Okay, so that's, yeah, that's just my input on the questions. I appreciate that. But yeah, that's just my, my input on the questions. But no, I do appreciate the effort in, in all that was presented.
Very much so.
Absolutely.
Thanks so much. Awesome. Thank you. Well, that's how we start, right? You have to have a talking.
Yeah. Okay, so. FFA textbooks are not on here for approval, just so you know. Is it?
It's not for approval.
No, it's just discussion.
Because I want to go through that same process.
Okay, perfect. Perfect. Okay, so we are on first reads of policies. The first one is policy thirty-two hundred, student rights and responsibilities. This is a policy we did not previously have. Did we not? Did we? I can't remember. No, we did not, because it was never previously adopted. Yeah. So there was just some minor language changes for fluidity. Does anyone have any comments, discussion, whatnot on this policy? Okay. Next, policy is an update to policy thirty-two eighty, equal education, non-discrimination, and sex equity. Must say equality, it's equity. We have the proposed new and the current content. There were some changes language-wise. One of the ones being, we did add uniform grievance pro, police, proceed, uniform grievance procedure. Just a way of trying to direct people with where to go and what to do. This is a policy that does need to be in all of the handbooks. And I believe it's part of the policies that are required to be specifically intentionally given to parents. Any comments, thoughts, questions? The yellow highlighted words are words that were added. Okay. The red words are my critique of what was written. Yeah. I can't seem to stop doing that. So next is the new protocol thirty-two ninety-five P, hazing, harassment, intimidation, bullying, and cyberbullying. There are procedures. This is definitions and procedures. So we had the policy, but we didn't have the complaint procedures on our website. So this is brand new. We did go through and emphasize a bit more on what bullying, from the school's perspective, what bullying is to mean. And intimidation, because it wasn't clear. It was kind of muddled. And so we broke them apart for definition. And then, of course, we left them kind of like harassment, intimidation, and bullying. If you're doing those, it kind of means you're doing this. So there was a little bit of clarification needed. We also wanted to acknowledge that we are going to do everything we can to enforce confidentiality. And if we do need to divulge something, we would definitely go back to the person before divulging it, because that wasn't very clear. And then I think that was pretty much it. So does anybody have any questions on this procedure?
I don't have any questions. And I didn't catch on the earlier one.
No worries.
Cyberbullying in the policy is all over the place with hyphens, spaces, caps, not caps, and cyberbullying is actually a single word.
Okay.
So that definitely means to be fixed.
Okay.
And then I have to read through this, including extracurricular given. And the patron was right and shared earlier this evening, given the recent ruling by the Supreme Court on what you can and not control that's not on school property, whether it's any school event or not. So anyways, that's, that's all I see right off the top.
Okay.
And I didn't catch that earlier.
Well, we can bring this back to committee tomorrow. Not a worry. The next is a new form. With the hazing, harassment, intimidation, bullying, and cyberbullying policy, there's also a form that we did not have. And so we're implementing the form just to provide. There isn't a links page in there, but the form is to provide anyone that has a complaint with a resource to complete and then start the ball moving if they have a complaint. We didn't have this prior. So this is new. The next policy is a. Do you have questions? Okay, the next policy that's coming for first read is a new policy for three-three-three-five academic honesty. This did have some clarifications that we, we added. And we sort of laid it out in a little bit easier way to read. More fluid, I guess, would be a better way to say that. We define what cheating is, to the best of our ability, what plagiarism is. We define what cheating is to the best of our ability, what plagiarism is.
That looks great.
And then the next one is a brand new policy 4250 Educational Re-Search in School Districts. This one just had just some language clarification that needed to be done. The. Yellows are ones that are coming to the board for approval, correct? 2120 and 5380?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, all right. No, 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 I'm, I can't remember what I tell you. So. Yeah. So that's pretty much it on that policy. If anybody has any questions?
Looks good to me.
Okay. Okay, do we have any board member input for future agenda items?
Yes. Not so many. And I think that's why the board calendar is so important. I mean, other than I know we have a ton of. Policy and I know that we're, you know, getting all these processes in, but. I think we need that somehow better planning months out. Like we need to know what's coming three months down the road. You know, and a lot of the stuff we do know when it's coming, but we just seem to get pushed right on top. And then we're scrambling to make the decision.
Okay.
It was quite a lengthy agenda.
It was.
Yeah.
And I do want to talk with you, Chrissy, about the layout, especially on those policies. Kind of more of what I was hoping for was something the way the HR items is brought before us. Where you do a great job with. Memo, and then we have either resignation, sorry, now my forehead's going to bleed. We have the resignations or the, you know, I'm quitting. So just all, just so in a sense, we would have policies. And then if we're updating, then you could just attach each policy. So we could approve them in a, in a block as a consent, consent agenda type item. We could approve them in a block.
I was just going to ask if we could do them all as a block.
Yeah, and then we could, we could have this.
I'm sure.
Right, we could have new, the new policies, the updates. And then like the, the review, the, we change numbers. I mean, the simple changes, but if we had those all in a block, because it's really hard, at least for me visually when. Because you do an excellent job at putting it all there. And then we have to go through every single one of them. So I was kind of hoping to make it look more like the HR presentation.
Well, and that's kind of what I tried to do, except they're just not attachments. So I had the overarching header of new or board policy and then renumbering of policy and then. Annual review of policy.
Right.
So we could say all the H, or just a letter, all the H items, let's do as a block.
Well, when, what I, what I did notice is like H dot eight dot eight. You gave the new policy 2120, but then the attachment is policy 2120 Program Evaluation and Diagnostic Test Proposed New. So you are double inputting, which I get. Yeah, if we just have the attachments, then we know these are all brand new, these are updates. These are just renumbering, whatever, so that we could just not necessarily speed the process up, but have a clearer, more concise picture of what we're actually doing. That would be great.
Yes, I think I will play around with board book.
Okay, because we do seem to be cruising through a lot of policy, which is a good thing because it desperately needs to be done.
I'd like to speak a little bit to what Trustee Grissom said with wanting to know a little bit further out. That also gives our patrons the ability to make contact prior to a subject, us discussing a subject. Rather than the night we're going to make the decision. I want that information so that we can discuss it. And I want that patron input before.
Right.
Ready to make, before we're tasked with making that decision and that action. I, I want that input and so I want the ability for them to do that and have the heads up that that is coming sooner.
Yeah. I agree, because then you're making the decision based on what your constituents have advocated.
I don't want this situation where. We don't get that feedback because they didn't know. Because we're getting, we're adding agenda items, like. Even we don't know sometimes until, you know, a few days before. So I want. I want to give them the ability to. Make contact before rather than after.
Right, okay.
I think it would, would help with the trust and transparency that we're going to discuss an item before rather than. Oh, we made this decision and now everybody's upset and they want us to reconsider it.
Right.
Decision rather than upfront and.
I agree.
I get it, that's, you're not going to be able to do that with, especially with personal issues, but I would.
I hear you.
I, I agree. Those, the emails were really disturbing that people thought we were trying to sneak something in. That really upset me.
Or that decisions are made on Zoom calls. Like they don't understand that this is open meetings and it's not a Zoom call. Yes, we have the Zoom. We're fortunate that we do have the Zoom platform now that people can watch from home or watch after the fact. But the fact that this isn't done in a hidden meeting.
Right, right.
That's another thing at some point we have to address too, because the AG's office gave a little bit of leniency because Zoom came into play because of COVID.
Right.
And that's when they, then they reversed everything and said, no, somebody has to be on site now in order for you to have a meeting. So the other thing we have to decide is. Are we sticking with Zoom for all eternity now? And are we still recording and are we still posting? Because we don't have a policy and like, nobody really did. That all came about.
Right.
Because of COVID, so we need to decide also if that. As a board, if that's something we want to continue to do or do we want to set a date and say, okay, after this date, you know, we're not going to do that. Or they're not going to be recorded and stored or, I mean, we just need to figure out as a board what we're doing.
Agreed.
That, yeah, access also, which I know it's, we've used it even just because of everything going on, so.
Out of necessity sometimes.
So then it does sound like for a future agenda item, we need to add. The Zoom platform and its function within our board meetings. Okay.
Especially now that we're sort of in summer and we have a transition period, if there's going to be one, you know, looking forward to next school year.
Right.
The other thing that the AG brought up also that I thought was a great idea was the ability. He was stating in the meeting that. If it's an agenda item and it's discussed at the meeting anyways, then when the patron goes to the website, they should be able to look at the same stuff that we're looking at by the same links. Do you do that? I've never looked at it from a patron's perspective. If they can go to the agenda and actually click the links and view everything that we reviewed here or.
So we absolutely can. You just don't, you just click them and open.
Okay.
You change your settings to hook in view.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, that would be a nice thing.
So we are doing that, then the, the public can do that.
Right now, there's, there, I can click them. Right now, they're set to agenda reviewer.
Okay. Just a clarifying question on that, the resignations and those letters?
No, 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 no.
Okay.
But like the presentations.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
You know, the financial reports.
Yeah.
The, all those things that we hear, yeah, no, the things that personnel, because we know.
Okay, okay.
Because what he was saying was, because of COVID, just everything that we've learned and to curb some of the frustration is instead of people having to turn in records requests for, hey, I want that slide show that you guys showed the other night. Or hey, you know, just, he said, just put it there. Just give it to them, you know, just.
Right.
And before they ask.
You don't want to hide the ball.
Yep. So anyways, I thought that was a good suggestion. And who, you know, it saves the clerk the job too, if records requests come in or what have you, that. Those things that are simple to get are already there.
Right.
They can find them themselves.
Okay. So any other input for future agenda?
Yes, please.
Go for it.
I would like to discuss the. Title for Athletic Directors.
Okay.
I believe we should change it to Activities Director, still an AD, but I believe that we should change it to Activities Director. As a reminder that they are responsible for activities other than sports.
Okay, excellent.
And I would like that job description reviewed too.
Okay.
It, it very much went from, it was original. You can tell just by reading through the job description that it started as an athletic director. And some parts and pieces were thrown in there. Oh, and you're responsible for these, some additional stuff too.
Right.
Just reading through that, I.
Okay.
I want it to be more complete and more inclusive of activities beyond athletics.
Okay, so then we would need the job descriptions for the athletic director and the consideration for retitling to Activities Director.
Where didn't you read that job description?
I requested it.
Okay, I was saying, because that was, when I look back at my list, all the job descriptions are gone from the website now, which I think they need to be back up there, even if they might not be completely up to date because the public has no access to them. But. So I'm glad you brought that up because that reminded me about that. Thank you.
More?
Nope, that was it.
Okay, okay.
For now.
So are you asking for work to put those on the website, the descriptions?
Yes, please. They were up there.
They were there for a while.
Well, they were there for a long time and then.
And her concern was that they weren't up to date and that we were working through those. She would put in a mask like that, but if you would like her to put them up, whether they're updated or not, she certainly can do that.
Yeah, I mean, we can put a little disclaimer or something on it or whatever. And as we update them, I guess that, that would go up there, but.
Well, I do think.
We have people working in these positions already, so if they're not up to date, then.
Okay, well, respecting that, I would assume future agenda item. I would like us to have clear job descriptions before the school season starts. Is that doable? For the positions that we have?
So we have been updating our job descriptions.
Okay.
The job descriptions started getting updated actually when I assumed this role.
Okay.
A couple of years ago. And as a job comes open, that's when we've been reviewing it. So, I mean, I definitely, I mean, are you looking for a document that basically has links to all the job descriptions for you just to go ahead and review? Is that, that was kind of what I was thinking.
Okay, well, your statement that, you know, as jobs come up, then we're reviewing in them and correct, creating them or whatnot. We still need to approve them. So if they're not being approved, we just need, I guess, a, a page with all the links to the job descriptions so that we can say, that's approved, that's approved, please make this change, et cetera. Okay, perfect. Yeah, that would be great because then we can get it done before school starts. We can get it uploaded so that the public has access to it. And if we have questions or if a patron has questions about what a specific employee is supposed to be doing, we can direct them to the website. Okay.
So can I clarify a question?
Yeah.
So again, we're not going to upload anything to the website quite yet.
Okay.
Is that, is that what I'm hearing?
I heard Trustee Grissom said she wants it uploaded now.
Yeah.
Disclaimer, we're still working on it.
Okay.
Yeah.
You know, they might not be 100% but we're going through the.
Yeah, definitely put the disclaimer there.
Trying to look at them. You know, because they were there and then they. And I understand why they weren't there, but it's the same thing we're doing with our policies, like they're.
They're there and they're outdated. They need to be updated and we're going as fast as we can. Yeah. But yeah, if you want to, as you update them or you know that they've been updated, just send them our way. I would say put them on the agenda. Yeah. Yeah, so that we can review them and approve them. That would be great. All right. Anything else for future agenda items? Trustee Grissom, anything else? Okay, any announcements that anyone has for us?
I think we need a workshop to really set a calendar because we just, I don't know how else to get it done other than all of us come together and set everything that happens on an annual basis or that needs to be done by the board on an annual basis or maybe work independently. I don't know how to get that accomplished so that we know it's there. Like if I can pull up a calendar and look two months down the road and go, oh yeah, we're going to, you know, we need to start working on this or this is going to be coming, that we can be pro, more proactive in preparation.
Yes.
Yeah, so that.
Things that our policy says that we need to do, things that.
Right.
The statute says we need to do by a certain date, yeah.
Yeah.
And like every year at this time of year, we do contracts, right? That's, that's not being snuck in anywhere. It's what we do every year at this time.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I don't know that, so at some point, I guess that's the only way we're going to accomplish that is to.
Okay.
Have a workshop and gather all the papers and create the calendar so that it's done. Because that way also with the agenda, if we know something two months down the road is coming, we can try and squeeze something else maybe before it. After it or.
We can just progress prepared as opposed to scrambling to make sure that we're doing it right.
Right.
Okay.
Like I appreciate it. Dr. Meyer keeps reminding us about the levy.
Yeah.
You know?
So that's, that's definitely huge.
Yeah.
And, and we don't want to scramble for that one either. Okay. Great, then we. Last action item is. A motion to enter into executive session for Idaho Code 742061B and A. No decision or actions will be made during executive session. This is only a motion to enter into executive session.
I will move to go into executive session for Idaho Code 742061B and A.
Thank you.
Second that.
Motion and a second, so we need a roll call vote.
Trustee Bain. Yes. Trustee Major.
Yes.
Chairman Thompson.
Yes.
Trustee Grissom.
Yes.
We're not plugged in yet.
The building has cut fire. Okay, so we've come out of executive session. No action is needed, needing adjourned.